Okay, I don't have a gavel tonight, so I'll have to use my hand. The gavel never made it back from town meeting, so we've got the manual gavel.
It's like the outwork at the bus public library.
I know. Never quite made it back. So, I'd like to call it to order. Tonight, Monday, June 1st, the North Andover Board of Selectmen's meeting. We are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And tonight, we have the honor of having some outstanding young folks with us tonight that have won-
We have one more outstanding.
Oh, yeah. Have them come in.
Oh, it's Josh. I didn't even notice you, Josh.
That's all right, neither did I.
I'm sorry. Good to see you. I'm sorry.
Come on in, sir. Sit right over here next to Josh. So, we have some outstanding young folks who have won service awards from the North Andover Youth Services. So, we invited them in to lead the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. So, guys, why don't you come up to the front here? And we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Whenever you're ready, one of you can stop.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Josh, if you would mind, just giving us a very quick overview of the awards and what the kids won.
No problem.
Just step to the microphone here. We'll get it to be official.
Usually very loud and vocal, I don't need a microphone, but- So, last week was probably the youth centers, the staff's probably favorite day of the entire year. Throughout the course of the school year, we've had many youth center members that took part in our leadership groups, community service, volunteer work, any type of programming that we put on. We invite down 200 people to our Youth Appreciation Day event where we kind of acknowledge everyone for all of the hard work and volunteerism that they showed over the course of the year. And out of those 200 people, we selected 20 winners for all different types of awards. We have a few underclassmen here that we brought today. We have Taylor Schaaf, who is our Outstanding Service Award winner. Leah Willis, Bruce Butterfield Award winner. Quinn Relahan, who was our Bill McAvoy Award winner. Alexa Keating, the Michael Ventreska Award winner. Tommy Holland, Outstanding Service Award winner. And our Middle Schooler Award winner, Eric Doherty, who also received the Outstanding Service Award.
He graduated high school in two years.
They've done an amazing job this entire year. All different types of projects throughout the course of the year. And like I said, it's one of our favorite night of the year, we can kind of congratulate them on a job well done all year, so.
Well, thank you all for coming in tonight, and congratulations on your awards, and thank you for all of the service that you do for the kids in town and being leaders for those young kids, too. That's just outstanding. So, thank you. And how many are graduating seniors this year? None yet? Okay, so we got you for at least another year up there.
We had a few seniors, but they're going through their senior week right now, so we kind of let them enjoy their-
Oh, we couldn't drag them in here, huh?
Karaoke night, I think, was tonight, so we brought some of the juniors here to the center and place.
Well, thank you all. And you're free to go, or you're free to stay if you like. It's gonna be very interesting. See if we get any take.
See you later.
Thank you all for coming in.
They have homework to do.
Josh, thank you for bringing them in. Okay, now we'll move to our next approval of the minutes. So, we have minutes from May 19th, town meeting night. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move approval of minutes from May 19th, 2015, open session minutes as written.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I have, I move approval of minutes from May 19th, 2015, executive session minutes as written.
Motion, Ms. Medili. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Watson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, communications and announcements. We have another new staff member to meet tonight. Very excited. And I think, are you gonna be introduced? Kathy, you gonna be doing the introduction tonight?
Good evening, everyone. So, I'm really happy to really introduce to people who don't know Julie. Julie is a North Andover resident, has lived here all of her life. She was hired in June of 2012 as the lab director. Since that time, she's continued her education. She has completed a leadership certificate program from the Mass Municipal Personnel Association. She has received her grades one, two, and three Massachusetts Drinking Water Facility Operator's Licenses. She has received basic and advanced certificates from the Mass Water Works Association. And in her spare time, you can see that she and her husband are raising their son, Jack, who's two years old and is here to support his mother tonight. Tracy will be interested in this. Julie comes from our alma mater, the Salem State University. She's a graduate of the School of Science with a BS in Biology and Chemistry.
Nice.
So, Julie has not really knew. She was promoted to the Assistant Superintendent position at the Drinking Water Treatment Plant as of April 13th of this year. She'll still wear two hats as the lab director and the assistant director. This is Julie Jinklia.
I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to continue working in the town that I grew up in and that my family and I are currently living in and plan to stay in, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Julie, and thank you for keeping the water safe. It's such an important job. It's incredible.
I love it. It's an awesome job. Thanks.
That's awesome.
Okay, thank you, Kathy.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Bye, honey. See you later.
Pledge of Allegiance next week.
Two weeks. Maybe two years.
Two years and three weeks.
He was almost getting tapped if those kids weren't here. He was gonna get tapped. Okay, Bruce, we'll have an update on the repairs on 495, our small little section of 495 that passes through the town.
Good evening. Anybody? I just take a minute. I can't tell you how excited we were when Julie decided to apply for the job. She's just great. And you can see her enthusiasm.
Great.
And it runs in the family, too, so it's great. 495, not a lot of impact to North Andover, except for some, probably some delays. Typical construction, I mean, you know, it's not gonna be closures or road closures. It's gonna be some paving, some drainage work on 495. On our roads, or adjacent to our roads for the on and off ramps, it's gonna be the handicap accessible and tie into the sidewalks, basically. And they'll keep us up to date on this, so.
Okay, so it's all being done by the state of Massachusetts?
Oh, it's all Massachusetts, yeah. Paving contractors doing it at Keating.
Okay, good to know. And the dates of it are?
It's supposed to start soon and probably, it looks like it's about a two-year project, 600 days.
600 days. That's a lot.
Yeah. Yeah, it's probably most of it's gonna be up on 495.
Wow.
Yeah. I imagine they're gonna do the paving at night, not all the work. I'm sure that the curbing work and some of the drainage work will be done during the day, but the paving's usually done at night.
So, we can expect some delays on 495 in the-
Yeah, you'll have delays. There's no question. And there'll be some disruption as you get off and on the highway when they're doing the on and off, on ramps, the handicaps, and the paving for that.
I imagine there'll be some noise, 'cause when they were doing the work on that big roundabout, boy, the banging that you could hear it in the middle of the night.
Yeah, there'll be a little bit of banging. Not really just construction.
Not as much as when you're building.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
Signage?
Yeah, like, "Welcome to North Andover and settle middle."
North Andover? You know it's a thing. We have a thing about signage.
I know.
Again, we ask them every year, and they, "Oh, yeah, it's coming."
Maybe they'll put it up with us.
Yeah, serious. Maybe they will. Maybe it gives us a little bit better leverage.
All right. Thank you for that update.
Okay.
Okay, any other communications or announcements that anyone would like to bring up before we move on?
Say that again? Did you just go past that?
No, we're not even-
What?
What's happening?
I'm on communications and announcements.
Yeah, it'd be Town Beach Fence Project.
You took the old one. That's the old one. Put that away.
What do you mean, "I took the old one"?
That's old.
Because I don't have that on my agenda.
That's not a new agenda.
Well, then, I have a different agenda than I have else, you know.
You do.
You have your own agenda.
He does. He always has.
I'll still go with this.
Yeah, I will share my agenda.
No, 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 I gotta hear. No, sorry, sorry.
You got it?
They had the iPad. This wouldn't be a problem.
Those go down. Last meeting.
Mr. Chair, I took a trip up to the plant up in Maine.
Mm.
And I'll tell you, it's beautiful. Honestly, where they have this, it's sighted on a beautiful river. It's really, you know, I'm not an expert, but from what I could see and smell, it wasn't, didn't appear to be much of a problem. It's not exactly the same as what we will be facing, because they have very few trucks that come in for this food processing, like, one a day. But they were looking into comparing the number of, you know, the sewer trucks, the septic trucks coming in, just to see how the number of trucks goes. But a few suggestions that I did get from the plant manager that I passed on to Andrew, and we'll probably be talking about a little bit more, but I think our consultants, for the most part, seemed to really hit the things that he was also concerned about. Again, a few things we talked about that we'll pass on. I think the big question is the trucks and how long they have to wait, if they have to wait, to unload the material. That's the big thing. And if they're waiting a long time, especially in the heat of the summer, it could affect traffic, it could affect, you know, odor. It's really not a noise issue, from what I could see. So, there's still a few things to learn about it and to make sure that we get the cooperation of the GLSD, so.
So, a couple of questions. Why is it they only have one truck a day? Are they just a lower volume?
Just don't have a lot of, just don't have a lot of-
So, are there like a facility that is comparable in size to what would be North Andover, or is it? My understanding was they had to continually feed the digester to keep it running.
They really only have about one good-sized truck that comes in. Because it's Maine, and there's not a lot of septic systems, it's a lot of sewage that comes in.
I know why you're asking that question, because when we toured the GLSD, the director expressed concern, but not dramatic concern, that during long weekends, because they wouldn't be running on Sundays, and then if there was a holiday on a Monday, that'd be two days where they weren't pulling in new materials.
They wouldn't be accepting deliveries.
Yes. That, you know, it'd be a little bit of a stretch, because they'd wanna keep feeding the digester. I mean, it was a little, not necessarily over my head, but again, I'm not an expert on that. So, that, it was just an interesting point. So, that's why if they were just taking in one truck a day, I wonder how they handle it.
We can certainly call the plant up there, how do they handle that?
Yeah. Do you have some contact names up there?
Yeah, I do.
Well, the engineering firm is working on the design for GLSD. Communicate to see if there, from a design perspective, if there were differences. That is what's being communicated. In fact, they're referencing a holding, what I'll refer to as a holding tank, it's a subsurface tank where the material will be put in, so that they can do a constant feed of the material, you know, over a seven-day period, even though the trucking wouldn't be allowed in seven days.
They do, that appears to be how they handle it.
How they handle it as well, so.
Yeah, they have-
Okay, so they keep enough flow in that holding tank, so that it's constantly making its way through the system.
Right.
I'm trying to pull up, maybe a little slow in doing that with Google Earth. I do have a location reference for where the trucks are supposed to be offloading at the GLSD. I think you'd be surprised at how far into the plant it is. So, this drop-off location is not where the septic currently unloads. It's behind the administration building. In fact, it's closest, the closest home in North Andover to the location of the two spigots where this can be offloaded is somewhere on 2,500 feet, half a mile, across the runway.
Okay.
So, it's pretty substantial, and it, they have indicated, based on the first responses by our environmental engineer, that their plan is to have two drop-off, one location, but two, I'm gonna call them spigots, 'cause I'm not an engineer, but two connections, so that they're not bumping into a situation of queuing. And one of the items that we're including in the amendment to the host agreement was that they could not idle. So, the trucks would never, trucks will be 1,000 to 1,200 feet away from the entrance of the GLSD. And so, you know, those are some of the feedback we got back to include in some of them.
And your concern is a good one, because the offloading of these trucks, from what we understand, takes a lot longer than a regular truck. But my, I guess, I think they're far enough off the road that I don't think they would pose a traffic issue, because there wouldn't be any regular traffic going by that.
Especially, you know, in the heat in the summer, and that's a problem. The other suggestion that they made, it's minor, but it's common sense, is that the vehicles that come in, that they should be cleaned, they shouldn't have material.
Yeah, I would expect them to be cleaned.
And what this facility does, if they don't come in clean, they get a warning, and then they're told not to come back till the vehicles are hosed down and cleaned, and if there's even a spill making the delivery, so to speak, that these things need to be addressed. So, I thought that was, you know, again, it's common sense, but probably something we should ask how they handle that. Because we don't want dirty trucks with oil material, frankly, with septic either, that are on the truck and visible and dripping or anything like that. I mean, especially oil from the food, we don't want that dripping on our streets either.
Again, I've talked to a design company, I haven't seen any concrete, but I've talked to the design firm for the, you know, the proposed facility, talked to them about some kind of wash-off that would be near the holding tanks, or could wash either into the tanks or in some other collection area, so that, it's not expected that that, it's more common likely on the septic than it would be on these vehicles. But it's been brought up as well. I was trying to, I'm not having an opportunity to look, call up Google Earth, but at 12 trucks maximum per day, from the location where they're going to be offloading, they wouldn't, for those of you who have been to the facility, they wouldn't even reach as far back as the administration building.
No, that building's, that facility's pretty deep.
So, they would be, they would be probably 1,000 feet from the gate, even if all the trucks showed up at the same time and were bumper-to-bumper to one another.
Which isn't gonna happen.
Right. Because if you put them all the way back, because the offloading facility for this plant has been placed on the far back corner closest to the digesters. But again, we've placed information that they make sure there'd be at least two offloading locations, that there be some kind of, I'll call it, truck wash.
Well, thank you, because that's the things I brought back, so I'm glad you-
Yep, exactly, yep. Truck wash. I haven't seen yet any concrete, you know, what it's in the plans, truck wash, and then the idling piece, which, of course, again, I don't think you'd hear the truck, but if they're there, they should be idling, they should just be shutting off.
Again, I just wanna make it clear, I'm not an expert. I went as an observer, just to see what they were saying, does it all seem to prove to be what they're saying.
Thank you for doing it. Thank you for going up there and taking your time to check that all out. We appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Okay, any, anything else on that topic before we move on? Okay? Any other communications or announcements? Okay, well, thank you. All right, we'll move on to consent items. First on the agenda is an acceptance of a donation of $5,000. Wow, that's a great, that's a really nice donation from Lowell Five Bank for the Fourth of July fireworks. Do we have any representatives? I don't see anybody from Lowell Five, but-
Move to a second, Jim.
Second half.
Okay, so we have a motion, Mr. Stewart, a second, Ms. Medili. Any discussion?
Other than that, I believe it gets us, what, halfway to our goal? Isn't it usually about $10,000 that we spend on fireworks?
We're pretty close to the goal.
Approximately $10,000. We've already received a commitment from Bintucket, and that we've accepted, and we've also received in the last couple of days confirmation, although no check yet, or no written confirmation from the folks at Wheel O'Brader. So, we will have more than enough to cover the fireworks.
One of the fireworks?
Third.
Usually the third.
Yeah.
Next meeting, set that date.
But, um, yeah, they should.
I'm not a rat.
I'm away.
It's a wonderful event, especially for people, families that are doing staycations, that everyone really looks forward to it. So, it's a great gift that these businesses give to us.
Absolutely.
Thank you again to Salem.
Quality of life.
Lowell Five, I'm sorry, Lowell Five, they've come up with, again, as a great community partner. Okay, so we have a motion, Mr. Stewart, a second, and Ms. Medili. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda, another great community partner, the Borderline Running Club. Chris Marshall is gonna give us a quick update on the, well, however long update on the Fourth of July Road Race. It doesn't have to be quick, Chris, you can take your time and tell us.
Hi, good evening. Chris Marshall, Borderline Running Club. This is the third year that I've had the honor of directing and producing the town's Fourth of July Road Race. My purpose for being here tonight is to formally request the use of certain town roads and resources to produce the event. Not, really not any changes from the past couple of years, the route is the same. We'll be starting and finishing at the Old Common, Old Town Common on Mass Ave. I've already met, actually, this morning, actually later this afternoon, with Lieutenant Gray to talk about logistics of road closures and such. I see that further down in your consent items, I think item D, the festival committee has a request to close Mass Ave at 6:00 a.m. That early closure is really due to my activities with the road race. That's when my team gets there and starts setting up. I think the actual festival committee's Fourth of July activities begin closer to noon, 10 o'clock or noon or something like that. But at any rate, that's the only semi-permanent road closure that we anticipate. The rest of the road closures would be more diversions of traffic. It's always our strategy to protect the runners, but minimize inconvenience for the residents and drivers, and we've got a pretty good plan together for that. From a safety perspective, I reached out to Chief Melnikus this morning and requested, again, an ambulance, and he responded in the affirmative, so we're all set there. And I've purchased and received our insurance certificate. So, really, we're in good shape. All I need is permission from you folks to hold the race.
And the other, one comment from DPW was about having the trash and recycle bins, and I can certainly vouch for these guys. Last year, they had them set up everywhere, the trash and recycle bins. So, that was a, that was great. So, do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Other than, it's the same thing. You bring a great event to the community for the Fourth of July, particularly for the families that are staying, along with the festival committee, and it's a great race. It's really fun, and the cheering with the microphone and everything, it's a great race. Thank you for doing it.
Glad you enjoyed it.
And I also wanna say that indirectly, the race is benefiting the Fourth of July fireworks as well, right? Because they, a portion of the money that is going to the Friends of the Senior Center has been also committed to the fireworks. So, we're gonna have quite a fireworks display this year from the sound of things, so thank you for that.
Or a little less pressure for next year.
Yeah. That's what I was thinking, yeah.
Fiscal conservative, good for you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for coming in, Chris. Okay, appointments. So, we have three appointments for two people, which is great. So, who'd like to talk, anybody from the Appointment Subcommittee wanna mention or address these?
Yep. So, the Elderly Disabled Taxation Fund Committee was one that this board wanted to move forward with and organize. We've accumulated approximately $20,000 in that account to help alleviate the strains of taxation on our senior population, and so we're looking to fill that committee. And we have, I think she's actually in the audience, Lauren Lemack, who is a younger resident who expressed an interest in joining this committee. And so, our committee voted, our subcommittee voted, and we're happy to recommend her and present her to the board for full appointment.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to appoint, move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Laurenne Lemack to the Elderly Disabled Taxation Fund Committee for a term ending June 30th, 2017.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Other than she is, she's a terrific candidate, full of energy and quite fun to be around. She's got a great sense of humor. They are gonna love her.
Well, thank you for stepping up and volunteering to help out. We should probably also mention that this fund that Phil spoke about with 20,000, approximately 20,000, is a fund that people voluntarily contribute to on their taxes, on their real estate taxes. So, it's a voluntary contribution to assist the elderly. So, thank you to all of those who voluntarily give their money to that, and again, to the committee that is now being set up to distribute those funds. So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
I told you.
Round of applause. Look at her, she's all excited. I love it back there.
Okay, so we have another one, Phil.
So, do you wanna speak about?
No, go ahead.
So, no, so Chinna was another woman who approached our committee, expressing an interest in joining multiple town boards. She is watching her daughter advance through high school, and she has a lot of additional time on her hands, and seems like a very, very great, she would be a phenomenal addition to quite a number of boards, actually. So, we had an interesting discussion with her that culminated with us asking her and her accepting if she'd be interested in serving on the Cable TV Advisory Committee, as well as the Festival Committee. So, she had a strong passion for youth and getting involved in town with events, so I'd like to move that the Board of, now, I would do this separately, right, because they're two separate committees, correct, Mr. Chairman? Move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Chinna Oroz to the Cable TV Advisory Committee for a term ending June 30th, 2018, as well as appointing Chinna to the Festival Committee for a term ending June 30th, 2016.
Here we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Well, I'd like to say the same thing. This was, I'll tell you, this is a great lady, full of energy, just really an unbelievable passion to give, but the thing that really stood out about her, she is a relatively recent citizen to the United States and such a proud citizen. She just kept talking about how proud and lucky she was to be an American, and, yeah, it was great. It was a great afternoon with these two terrific ladies, so, yeah.
Well, thank you, Chinna, for your service as well. So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right.
All in favor, big thanks.
Yep, big thanks. Okay, next is the request from the Festival Committee to hold the Fourth of July celebration on the Common. Do we have anyone here to speak to it from the Festival Committee?
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the request of the Festival Committee to use the Common for the Fourth of July celebration from July 3rd at 1:00 p.m. to July 4th at 11:00 p.m. to close Massachusetts Avenue from Osgood Street to Academy Road on July 3rd from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., and on July 4th from 6:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. and to waive all fees.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for Mr. Stewart. Any discussion? Looking forward to it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Reposed? Okay. All set on that one. Okay, now, you know what we've all been waiting for. So, we are going to vote tonight on the facade for the new Town Hall. We've gotten some town, we've gotten some input from residents of the town, which we thank you for that, both in an information session we had here, not both, in three different forums. Information session we had here at Town Meeting, and we also had, I believe, an email voting, or allowed people to send in their opinions via email. So, we got a few responses. So, what we're going to do tonight is, once again, review the current facades that are up for vote, and then we'll have an opportunity for the Board to give their opinions, and then we'll open it up for some brief public comment to let us know your thoughts, if you're here to speak to it, and then we'll take a vote at that point. We'll probably do, we're going to do two votes. We're going to do one for the facade and one for the plaza area, because they're really independent of each other. They're not, they don't need to be tied. So, let's, first of all, take another review of the facades. There's three options. There's our current building. I believe that's Don's car in front.
No.
No?
Too small.
Oh, too small, okay.
It's close.
So, the first one, Mr. Manziel, you want to talk to it?
Sure. There were three options presented that came as a combination of information from the architects, then feedback from the Board of Selectmen, and then forwarded to the public. Option A, or facade study option A, retains the fire apparatus doors, as we're looking at the screen to my right. And then, on the left side, where the current entrance door is to Town Hall, emulates that door entrance by having a window, but it is not the same size as the current windows there. So, that's notable as it relates to options C, which we'll show you in just a bit. So, the difference between this and C will be really that, the window structure that's on the existing side of Town Hall right now.
And just make a note, my understanding is they're not working fire doors, they're just facade fire doors as well.
Yes, these will be office spaces, regular commercial office spaces, so behind that will be the Building Department and so forth. So, these will not be operational doors.
That would be a surprise, someone hits the button.
Might be a good way to get out.
A little cold.
Option B, or facade study option B, removes the garage bay doors or the fire apparatus doors on the right that currently exist. And we've called this the symmetrical option, where everything on the left matches what's on the right. You notice that instead of the door, or what emulates the door on Town Hall currently is replaced with a window that's very similar to the windows that currently exist on the front of both the Treasurer's Office and the Clerk's Office. And on the right side, where the garage bay doors or where the apparatus doors are, that now emulates what is on the left as I'm looking at it. Third option, as I indicated, was similar to the first, in that the apparatus doors are retained on the right, but then on the left, instead of that wider window that looks somewhat like the apparatus, apparatus doors, the window that would be placed there would be very similar to the windows that currently exist on the front of Town Hall. And exist on the second level of both Town Hall and the fire station.
So, I think we'll stop here, and we'll talk about the plazas next. But this is the first of the options that we're going to see as the facades. So, I think what we can do is open it up to the Board for discussion.
Mr. Chair, I, when I first, when I first saw these, my first initial reaction was to go with the one that was symmetrical. I just said, you know, it just was pleasing to the eye, and I had a few other reasons. I thought, gee, well, we don't want it to look like a restaurant, which is often what they do with fire, with fire station, old fire station buildings. And then I went home, and I thought about it, and I thought, you know, we've taken down all the major historical buildings on Main Street. Our newest one, we're looking forward to a nice new plan with the Brass Street, even though I didn't, wasn't for that. But the building, I don't like the name of it, but there was a building on Main Street called the Odd Fellows Building. It was a beautiful building, that's gone. Johnson High, further up Main Street, is gone. And this is our last signature building from our original village right here in downtown Main Street. And I also thought, you know, being a mother of boys, having, and of course, I always say that, but our kids visited that fire station. They got up on the truck, they rang the bell, and this is a signature building, and I think we should have it look as close to the original building, but yet make it be functional. For that reason, I will be voting for A. I like that they tied in the other window to kind of pull towards the fire station doors. It sort of pulls it all together, which used to be, or will use to be. It's presently our front door right now. So, for those reasons, I thought, this building is, in so many of our town pictures, we actually have it over there, that I think it needs to kind of keep with tradition and history. So, that's where I'm going.
I was of the same mindset. Initially, I wanted it the symmetrical and pleasing to the eye, and 50 years from now. And then I went home, and my mother still has up on her fridge a picture of Cameron and Lieutenant Nussbaum from an open house.
Oh, I didn't even know.
10 years ago. And it's still on Ma's fridge. So, I'm with you.
And I'm voting for A, but I'm not voting, my wife is voting. Vote's coming from her. I'm just being the facilitator.
We all have our influences.
I mean, my initial problem with A was that I felt that middle window was a floating door, and I did not like the floating door.
So, that great, option A and C weren't actually originally the ones that were before us.
Correct.
It looked unfinished.
It looked unfinished.
C was, but A was slightly different in that.
Right. Right.
The sills have been aligned in A, so that...
Right. So, it's, that was my big thing, was that floating door. As long, you know, I'll take the double window, that's, you know, more light into the building. I'm good with that. It was just the fact that it looked like a floating door, so.
So, and myself, I've always been on board with A. That was my original, the one that I liked the best.
Yeah.
When we first presented it, because I thought it was important to keep those, that look of the garage doors in honor of all the men and women that have served in that, in that building as firefighters.
I agree.
And for bringing our own children there. And again, I didn't even think about the signature part of it, that it's in so many pictures around town that it's, that's the building that we want to, to me, we want to preserve that look. So, I've been a fan of A, and I guess I'll continue to be a fan of A.
Well, this is why we put these types of things through the sausage grinder, so to speak, and have people, right, and have people weigh in on it, and usually the best comes out in the end, so.
Any comments from the audience? Well, any further comments before we move? Okay, if anybody from the audience would like to come up and speak to this, or against it, or for it, or however. Stan? It's not public comment yet.
This is hysterical. That's hysterical.
Stanley, 43 Stone Creek Road. We came to the public hearing that Ray held and gave Ray some feedback. As a member of the Historical Society, this is one of probably the six most iconic photos in North Andover, the Fire Station. And we have it from horse-drawn fire apparatus to 1950s fire trucks to the modern times. So, historically, it seemed like it'd be unfortunate to lose that view of North Andover. You left out the Merrimack School, Rosemary. That was another one of our iconic buildings on Mass Ave.
A little further up, yeah, the old St. Michael's.
Not as far as Johnson High, but a little further up. So, just a thought here, from a historical point of view, it'd be wonderful to preserve this facade, sort of the tie into our history, and it makes the building look a little bit more unusual, unique. I would characterize Plan B as sort of, let's call it arsenal modern.
Yeah, that's what I call it, armory.
Or arsenal old, you know? Looks like every arsenal I've ever seen in Massachusetts. So, I don't know, it doesn't have the right look to me. The, I don't know, are those gun ports? So, I definitely think that that's the one that would best serve the historical aspects of North Andover. Thank you.
Keeps character of Main Street, so, yeah, hope you hear that.
Thank you very much, by the way, Ian Erickson, 57 Lincoln Street. And thank you for having the sketches at Town Meeting, because I think that was, you know, useful for people to see them and so on. So, everybody that spoke, I couldn't hear what Don said, but everybody else that spoke, I kind of agreed with, because when we first had seen the sketch at Ray's meeting a couple of weeks ago, we really, everything that you said about the iconic look of the fire station and Main Street and the buildings that we've lost, that we'd like to keep. So, I definitely agree with either A or the revised C. I mean, you know, either one of those. But to keep the arch windows are really important, because, you know, you hear from us about the, and the Historic Commission, about the historic landscape of North Andover. And this is Town, our Main Street, Upper Main Street, and this is a really iconic landscape. So, I hope that that's the, either A or C is the one that you select. Thank you.
What I said was, my wife, Mary, picked A, so I have to vote for it.
Yeah, I talked to your wife, Mary. I think that she'd have talked to you, Don, that's what I wondered.
The influences continue to roll.
They don't come to me, they go to my wife.
Okay. Go with that.
Good point. So, Mr. Mailer just reminded me that in the current, in this image, the, above the main door, it says Town Hall. Our current sign says Town Offices. So, I think...
Looking back into some period photos, going back, I think into the 50s, it also said Town Offices.
Really?
So, when we presented this, because, for all of us, even though we enter the building every day, we don't always look up and see what it says. But what it has said historically is Town Offices, not Town Hall. And we can make that whatever you like, but I just wanted to bring it up, because we did actually get somewhat of Town Hall.
Did that matter? Oh, you put on the plaque. Yeah, on the plaque, yeah.
I, we're listening.
I'm listening.
So, I like, personally, I like Town Hall, because it is Town Hall.
Well, you're going to have to.
I'm with you on the Town Hall.
I didn't say it's not your choice.
I mean, I don't know if Google Maps matters, whether he was on Google Maps.
Did you have a service, Joseph, other stuff?
I like Town Hall personally.
I do, too.
I do like the sound of it. I did, someone from the Historical Society did say, if we do decide to change it, that those letters go to the Historical Society. Does it? I'm curious, does anyone in the room have a preference into Y? Who's throwing things around?
When spring came out, I came to project.
You just have to...
Cathy Siska, 201, Osgood Street. You know, Rosemary, even though it does say Town Offices, every, you know, I've been born in North Andover, been in, we never said we're going to Town Offices. We always said we're going to Town Hall. So, Town Hall would be perfectly acceptable to myself and the Historic Commission members, so.
Okay.
Nobody ever said Town Offices.
Nobody ever says Town Offices.
No, they said we're going to Town Hall, so.
Good.
Okay. I'm sorry, are we ready for a motion?
I move that we accept Plan A, and with the exception that the sign over the door says Town Hall.
So, we can accept Plan A as presented.
As, okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Further discussion?
Except that the lettering will go, will then be placed at the Historical Society.
Is it lettering, or is that like?
Whatever it is.
The whole granite inside, I think.
Well, that could go to them then, right?
If someone wants it, they can, we can figure it out.
Still trying to get stuff on.
It's not, it's not...
Steve Conley.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. We'll now vote. All those in favor of Plan A, option A for the facade, signify by saying yes.
Aye.
Aye, whatever, all means the same. Opposed? All right, well, that's unanimous.
That's great.
All right, so the next thing we have to discuss, which I don't know there's as many opinions on, is the actual plaza in front of the Town Hall. So, we have these interchangeable, snappable parts right now, won't be in the future, but we have a good opportunity to talk about how the plaza is going to look like. So, we have, again, three options for the plaza design. I think one, option one, option A, has been modified based on our input. We originally, this is the way, this is the current, this is the current plaza out in front, which supports the fire station, the driveway for the fire station, and the flagpole to the far left of the drawing as you look at it. And then, we have three options. Now, this option, I believe, was the one that we, this was one of the options that we discussed. The second option had, option B, had the planting boxes, but we had some questions about annuals and the maintenance of those annuals. So, in this drawing, they've replaced those annuals with perennials and green, green plants instead of flowering plants. And then, we have option C, which is a larger, more rectangular plaza. So, option A and B are very similar, and then option C is a kind of a big design change. One of the primary differences between A and B is the position of the flagpole. In A, the flagpole still sits to the far left of the screen, and then in option B, the flagpole is more in the centralized, what I'd call like the memorial or meeting area. So, those are our three options for the plaza.
I have one comment on all three. It says, replace the sidewalk with brick. You're watering a tree. Ever try walking on Main Street when it's icy? Brick is very, very slippery.
Well, it probably would be stamped brick.
No, if it's stamped brick, that'd be worse, because it does break up. It's breaking up now on the crosswalks.
Oh.
Well, the breakup on the crosswalks is primarily because you're traveling vehicles at significant weight over them on a regular basis.
I travel over the sidewalks, and I'm a significant weight, too.
It does say brick, so I'd assume that it's not the stamp. They must be talking about real brick, right?
Yep.
But anybody who's walked on Main Street when it's icy, you can't...
It says replace concrete with brick?
Yeah.
Right now, it is assumed to be brick.
But you still have a problem with, but I just...
Can I ask a DPW director? Because you had, you had spoken, I remember when we were working on, the committee was on the Town Hall, that you talked about the stamp and how durable it was. Do you have any input on slippery?
If I have to answer anything about brick, it'd be always no, because of the long-term maintenance, and it is slippery. We're actually taking some of it out along, on High Street, that project, because it did get slippery down there. The stamp, Andrew answered the question about the stamp. You know, when it's in the roadway, it's a completely different situation. You have pavement next to it, you have cars going over it, you're freezing and thawing with it, with those situations. So, stamp would be a good idea.
Can they put something in the stamp, just a little grit, if we're worried about it being slippery?
It's, no, the stamp's pretty gritty, if you look at it.
It is, okay.
Yeah, it's the brick that gets a little slippery.
That's what I, Donnie talked to me about this earlier.
Can I ask what the difference is with stamped brick?
Well, it's not a stamped brick, it's actually a...
It's concrete.
It, no, it's plastic. It goes down extremely hot. So, what you do is you prepare, you prepare the base with something, either hot top or cement or something, and then they, it's a thermoplastic that goes on top of it, and then they stamp it. With a, with a, like a, almost like a branding iron. And that's how you get the brick looking.
It looks great, though.
It looks fantastic.
What's the rest of the courtyard going to be?
Meaning what material?
It does look green on it.
Cement, hot top.
Colors all along, but it's...
Really, it's like, it's like 12 by 12 pavers.
Pavers.
Oh.
Pavers. Interlocking pavers.
Oh, okay.
They're slightly, I'm a little colorblind, so bear with me, but the spaces to the far left and right, that's grass, although not deep green. And then, obviously, you see the boxes, which would now be all perennials, and then the yellowish color, that's not, the tones are off here, they're meant for design purposes. That's a paver. And then the stairs in the center of this particular picture, because there's, remember, this isn't flat topographically, so this is not a flat area. Even the entrances, right and left here, will be on a slope to get you to the right handicap entrance, because the road isn't flat.
So, I think we can certainly vote on the design tonight, and then talk about the materials, when we have some options of what those materials could be, like the, like the one by one pavers, they look like one by one pavers anyway, that are in there, and the options that we would have with that.
If you can focus us on that, we can have the architects come back with a couple of different options in terms of what they would, in terms of providing more of a true color, and probably from a spatial perspective, looking at this straight on from the street as opposed to down from the top.
I was going to ask for that.
But I think it's, it gets a little difficult from a cost perspective, if they're doing that with multiple scenarios.
Right.
But they certainly can come back and talk about things like stamped concrete and the nature of the paver that would be in that area.
And we're going to want to talk about the shrubs and everything else that's going to be in the, in the...
See how they line up against the building, like, you can't really see that here.
That'll be a little difficult, no matter what, but I think they would be able to spend more time on this and give you some more feedback if they had one, one of these different plaza study designs or options accepted, then they could work and spend a little more time on that before going out to bid.
Finalizing the materials and everything else.
It is.
It's not, even though it says replace concrete with brick, it's already brick. Is it brick all the way through, though? It's, it's... Yeah, even in front of, even in front of the fire station. All the way to the street?
If you look in front of, in front of the...
Not all the way to the street.
Cement.
Yeah, not all the way to the street. No, the current, the entrance to Town Hall, but I'm talking about the sidewalk itself.
There is, it goes all the way straight to the...
Does it?
Yeah. I mean, some of it is in front of the fire entrances.
It's concrete.
No, it's brick, but in front of the current main entrance of Town Hall, it's concrete.
Oh, okay. I'm not talking here, you're right there. I need to put my glasses on.
So, it would really be taking up the brick that's currently, in front of the fire station, both the main entrance of the fire station and the bay doors. of the fire station, both the main entrance of the fire station and the bay doors. In continuing, currently, we just have regular concrete, regular, non-color altered concrete. That's the current look, which is, maintains well, lasts long, doesn't slip. You can talk about the stamped version of that, or you can look at this. So if you can focus us on a particular plaza, plaza design, then, then we can come back with some options relative to some of the details, so you can see that aesthetically in a little more detail. Yep.
Just plain.
I like A.
Where's, where's A?
I mean. A's.
The reason, in my opinion, the reason I like B is because the flagpole is more centrally located to the door.
Yeah.
It's not kind of sitting off by itself.
And I feel like there's a wider area for congregating, should we.
People want to do an event there.
Right.
Perhaps a small ceremony.
Right.
Yeah, it is wider. Yeah, there's more, there's more space out in front.
How about, how about, was it, was it A or B?
It'll be.
We haven't.
Which one do you want?
I'm married to nothing.
A's got the two trees.
See, I like the flagpole here, and I like to be able, if people have a ceremony.
Yeah, so why don't we take the trees out of A and put them in B, and then we have a combination of two.
I mean, some of, some of the feedback from last session, and again, it was just consistent with what was just mentioned, was, one, that we get rid of the perennials, excuse me, the annual, so that you lose some, just from a maintenance perspective. And, and two, there was strong sentiment that the flagpole be close enough to the center of the building, that when we have Memorial Day events or other events that typically center on the flag, that we, we move it closer to the center of where the building's center was.
The only thing, and I hear you and I agree with a good part of that, but I wonder if, you know, if you put the flagpole to the side, it has its own spot and its own glory, and it doesn't take away from the front entrance. I don't know.
That's certainly true. You just wouldn't be able to bring any people in here. It wouldn't be any, it's more your.
You know, because, you know, when we, we're going to put the lamps back, the, the original lamps.
Yep.
And I just think that you get a better view of the front entrance, and then the flagpole is to the left with its own. That's.
I kind of like the flagpoles more closer to the center of the door, because I think, you know, it just, to me, if you visually, if you're looking at the front of the building, you see the door, you see the flag, you see the congregational area there, everything is in one, you know, one, one visual location.
You have to, because they have to grade the front to bring it home.
But, so you can go around the sides with a wheelchair, okay?
I think my biggest, I like both B and C. I think my biggest concern with A is the limitation to any future events that we might, we might want to hold there. I don't know necessarily what events, but it limits our flexibility.
I do tend to agree with that. I mean, C, C, I like the openness of C, but I don't like C.
I don't like C.
You know what I mean? I like the openness of it. So for me, I guess the compromise is B.
I'm, I'm.
I'm not married to.
I, I am same. Other than C, I don't like C.
Yeah, other than, I think we're all in agreement on C, though.
And B seems to still allow the architectural features that we were just discussing with the, the doors, to still be visible from the street as well, so.
Would any of you prefer B, if the, the front staircase closest to the street were wider?
Yeah.
And we cut back, made that entrance to provide a clearer view of the door, so
That's a great idea.
If we took, if we took these two.
Yeah, that's kind of combining two benches.
I can't point on the screen, but.
People are going to sit on the steps anywhere. I agree.
If we brought those back, so that it was one less bench on the upper level, and the staircase was wider.
I like that.
Would you prefer that?
Yeah. I'd like to see the, the entrance, and I like to see the flag. I just don't want one taking from the others.
Yeah, yeah, the way this one is. Yeah, that's a nice idea.
Well, now's the time to do it.
See what the architects say.
Okay, so. B with amendments?
B with slight amendment, yep. That's the proposal. What does Mary say?
I gave her one vote. I know, no.
That's not true, Don.
She doesn't want, she doesn't want brick anywhere. It's too slippery.
Okay, so, any public, any further comment from the board? Anybody from the audience and public want to say any words on the plaza?
The move that the Board of Selectmen approve, choose Option, what do we say, B, with the, as the facade design with, I'm sorry, as the courtyard design, with the change in widening the front stairways in for a better view of the front door.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Mr. De Colgiero, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we have two unanimous decisions on that. Excellent.
I agree. That's a good idea.
Okay. So next, under consent, we have a request for a three.
Before we move on, I was just, when we, when we redid this town hall, there was a, a building advisory committee, which we've had on other buildings in town as well. So I would ask the board to consider compiling an advisory committee, which we, again, we did, we brought people from different parts of the town, like, for example, you'd probably have someone from this town hall, someone from community development, perhaps have selectmen, each have a representative, have someone from the Historical Society. Years past, they actually had the Building Commissioner, just as an advisory committee, as we go forward and we look at the plans. How, where are we on the interior plans?
The interior plans have been completed with the help of an advisory committee, which included the staff from the two facilities you identified, the Facilities Director. That's what came, we showed you several meetings ago, the sort of interior plan, and that, the layout that we gave you in a series of documents, I was at a meeting, I'm going to miss the meeting date. Was it the 14th of, it may have been in April, might have been the 14th of April.
Tuesday.
Provided you a copy of the interior layouts that were a function or result of that, that was nine to 10 months worth, well, whatever took place, ending last town meeting in May of 2014. And Kathy W. was the internal sort of head of that, but it included the architects, the OPM, Ray, who's been overseeing the facility master plan, Steve Foster from Facilities, two folks who were in the Osgood Landing facility, and two folks from this building, representative from the Clerk's office, and a representative from a missing one. And they worked for nine months on the design, and those designs were provided to you at the April meeting for the interior. It's not the decor, it's the physical layout of usable spaces.
When do we, as the Board of Selectmen, get to vote on yea or nay of those designs?
Yeah, we provided, until we didn't get feedback that there would be a change of that, we certainly will be having to the next meeting for you to do that.
And what about, what about things such as colors of the building, when?
This was just interior layouts, using the people, not from a, from a, the people who use the building every day, meaning those people who occupy the buildings, that was really in terms of building layout. We haven't, there's been no selection of colors, aesthetics, finishes. We're not, that would happen as, as a function of.
So for the next meeting, we can get a look at the interior.
Yeah, you already been provided to me. We provided in a public meeting on April 14th, in detail, provided you the floor layouts of each office space, it provided you the diff, the interior view. If you remember, it was sort of courtyard view off the center of the building, provided at that meeting, talked about them for, for a bit.
Yeah, no, I remember that. I just want to know.
I do, I'm like, I don't even remember that.
And Don was concerned about the stairs, there were stairs to get up to different.
Oh, that's right.
Yes.
Okay.
So, but Rosemary, are you asking if we can have a formal vote to accept those plans?
I think we should.
Okay.
I think we, I think we should, and I, I, well, then, I guess I would ask that there's an advisory committee to, to make sure that, I, I know when this building was being done, there was a point where people were told to pick whatever furniture they wanted for their office, until, and colors, and the problem with that is, you can't move one piece of furniture to another office without it sticking out like a sore thumb. And there's, there is, I think there's an art and finesse to making sure the colors harmonize, that it's a pleasing building. There was great effort to make this a building where people can come and they can learn about their town. We put historical pictures up and sense of history, so I think that it's important that we keep that going. So I guess for that reason, I'd like the board to consider an advisory committee on the interior as far as colors and so forth and so on. We did, and the group worked a really long time on that. Linda Trembley was on it, I was on it, Eva Hamery, who does that as a business, Joyce Bradshaw, and I'll tell you, it was a lot of work. Millie Mottaso, and of course, we know that she, artistic style and pictures and.
Well, I mean, I guess for me, I would like to continue the north end of a theme that we have on this side through the other side.
Exactly, so people can come in and be proud of their town hall, and not just put stuff.
I don't want that side to be all modern, deco, whatever, and totally different from this side. It should.
There aren't going to be sides, it's going to be a modern town.
I know, but you know what I'm saying, like this, this, it is going to be sides. It's two different sides, and what, everything that goes on over here with all these old, you know, founding families and that type of thing, I don't want over there, like George Bush pictures and all modern new thing. I, nothing against George Bush. I didn't, no, I have nothing against George Bush. I have nothing.
Speaking for, speaking for the only Republican at the table.
I want historical, not recent. No, I mean, I don't want like new.
You want, you want, no, you want it consistent. That's, I think that's.
I like consistent.
We know that she occasionally votes on the other side of my side, so it's okay.
So, all right, so do we have a motion? Do we, do we want to make this in the form of a motion?
Well, I don't need, do we need to wait for the next meeting to put this on the agenda, or can we do this tonight without violating?
If you're going to take a vote, I, it certainly. Meeting, just to get some direction. So the last time, when there was the committee, which appeared to be a working committee, based on the plaque, was that working committee came back with the final design that was voted by the board, interior design, without the decoration? Ray's indicating no. So, but you want to vote this time on the interior layout of the building?
I don't need to vote on the interior layout, but I would like consistency through the building.
I mean, just so, just in fairness to us, we, we have provided it. I'm not saying we wouldn't again, and I'm more than happy to discuss it. It's not that, but I don't want to leave the impression it hasn't been provided. It was provided as part of the public meeting packets two months ago. But, yeah, so, but you're not looking at next meeting to vote on the interior layout, it's about forming sort of a design, what do they call the, what do they call?
It's called a town decorating committee, design committee, whatever you want to call.
Yeah, the more, whatever, whatever help they can provide to make this.
Just so like, Phil said it's consistent, and, and I.
What kind of pictures to go, and where you should go, and.
I'm not the person for that, that's for sure.
I know, you just said you were colorblind.
I don't want all modern stuff on it.
A decorating committee for town hall. And how many people did you say were on it, vote? And represented us from the community?
They were representing, it was people who had experience in, in design and layout and history and.
Five, seventy from, from the fire department, I would think, that maybe they'd be a little bit for the photographs and things like that.
For the next meeting, let's think about the makeup of it, and we'll make a proposal and put a vote together to establish that committee. We won't try to hash it all out here tonight. I mean, I said we go through.
We should be decorating individual.
We can go through and name a million people that should be on it, so.
Hallways and stuff.
Well, again, just a harmony of colors, so that, it's just for practical reasons, if you, you should be able to move furniture from different parts of the building and not have it clash.
Are we moving furniture from Osgood Landing down here, or are we purchasing? Okay. But I mean, I don't want to dictate to people in their office, like, I wouldn't go into Andrew's office and say, you need to have this picture, this picture, and this. I don't want to do that. I'm thinking, like, the hallway is like, like.
The common areas.
The common areas should be consistent about our town and our founders and the fire department and those types.
Well, actually, in the, in the offices, they do get to pick pictures from scenes around town, but we did ask them not to put up like, you know.
I guess I question micromanaging this. I mean, I could see this becoming a very, a very, I mean, the, the, I would say, let's try to stay consistent, and I don't know what the best framework is for that, if it's an advisory committee to just make sure we continue along how, I think we're all pretty satisfied with how Town Hall is currently decorated.
Yeah.
And the color schemes and the pictures and the type of pictures and from the historical error.
So it just be more of the same.
Because the same is very, because you did a good job the first time around. Let's.
So, so let's take it that way. Let's propose for next meeting. So we won't solve it here tonight and decorate it tonight, but let's, let's put together a committee, or let's talk about putting together a committee next week, next month, I mean, I'm sorry, next meeting, we'll talk about the members that should be on that, the number of people. Rosemary, if you have information from the last one that we can use as a guideline, and then we'll establish that committee, put, focus on that committee.
I appreciate that.
And we've got time to, we've got time to do that.
So what I'll need is feedback to make sure I can give proper direction to the architect, because sometimes I need, I want the architect to understand what the relationship is. If the board at that meeting can provide very specific decoration, is it going to be floor colors, is it going to be wall material, is it going to be, because I'm sure they've made some, my, my guess is, it's not my guess, I know that they've assumed based upon the difference, I would say, between this project and the last project, is this project now exists. Last time, it didn't exist. So the assumption all along is that they're going to emulate the work of the last project. So, but if that's going to be different, or the level of detail is going to be carpet in offices and, and some of the, then I, we're going to need the scope so I can make sure that we're clear in our communication with the architect, because I don't want to create a confusion that ends up with replicating work, because then typically the architects will.
I think more from my concern, more a delay in the process, so we can't go out to bid in August, September, which means we can't start the project once Fire Station moves out, and we'll have a delay of three to six months.
So, so.
I mean, obviously.
So a scope of what the expectation of the committee will be, so we can be clear with the architects, would be helpful, very helpful, so we can communicate that to the architects. And then obviously, whatever you want to do with the committee.
I mean, I'm talking about, like, I like that Rosemary found that turkey and brought it in. It's Turkey Town. I like that.
But we put a thing with it. But even in people's offices, they certainly can have family pictures, they can have their college degrees, they can have things that interest them, but we're just. You know, we've.
It's pretty tidy, Town Hall now. I can't.
It is, no, I agree. But what I'm saying is, we just don't want people just saying, oh, this is funny, and just tacking it up on the wall. We're trying to avoid.
But that's a different scope, and that's what I want to avoid. I need to understand very clearly, because I'm in a spot where I'm now confused.
I think that's where the CEO comes into play, and that's Andrew dictating what.
But I think what Andrew's talking about are elements that need to be in the plans early, like pictures on the wall, doesn't, we can decide on those later.
Right.
But if we're going to have a color carpeting or something like that, those need to be in the plans early on.
Yes.
That was a safe assumption.
Yes.
We, our intention is to make one town hall, so if you walk down the hallway of what's going to be the new side, you will see the same type of hallway with the same kind of walls and color, and the wood, whatever you call that, chair, doohickey.
Like, I don't share a lot of this kind of.
Yeah.
I want to get, I want to make sure we're clear. There's pieces that we're paying for, meaning the architect. If we're emulating, blank your mind of the art for a minute, right? If we're emulating the look of this side of Town Hall on the other side of Town Hall, then the architect already knows what they're doing.
All right, okay.
Colors and those kind of schemes. If we're talking about some alteration of that, I need to direct the architect in a different fashion. If we're talking about those additions to walls, like artwork, or, then those things are not part of what will be in a bid document. Those are things that are done while the bid is going on, sort of post-construction, but thought of in advance. So that's what I mean by scope. If there's some decisions to alter, everything from how the handicap signs read on outside of offices, the paint, the flooring, the wainscoting, any of that, then I need to know that far enough advanced to work with the architect. Everything else, that group can continue to meet down here while the architect is doing their work, and we can do that afterwards.
What happened?
I was going to say, since I oversaw the project, I mean, basically, the decorating committee that Rosemary refers to came in after the fact to, to, to do the pictures, and, and they hired Don, unfortunately, to put up some of the pictures and stuff like that.
But it wasn't just that, though. There were also color schemes that people chose, that the architect would give.
No, that was done, that was done well before. The decorating committee, that was part of the working committee.
I understand. That was part of the committee that we know from what, because the plan has been decided. There was an advisory committee that did say, okay, we'll go with this, this, and this.
And we've had that. We've already.
And that committee was made up very similarly to the one that this committee was made up. There were employees, there was staff, remember Ray was involved, Ray was involved in this one. We didn't have a facility director, we do now, he was involved, but a little more, quite frankly, on the HVAC.
Is green all the way through the building? Or did you change the color? Aqua?
Mint.
Mint?
But again, that's.
No, but is that what you've chosen?
No, but I'm saying, but then we'd have to change the existing offices that aren't being redone also.
Just, just for the sake of.
But is that what we're doing? Are we doing exactly what is here through the building?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, could I, could I ask a quick question, not about the paint color?
Can we, for the next meeting, get an update on what the current plans are? Obviously, you know, we've seen the layout, but what are the current plans? And then we'll talk about, and we'll establish that committee. I think we're spending a lot of time on this tonight.
I agree.
And I think we need to move on.
I'm ready to move on. I think we've got the point. I think we've got the point.
And we can, we can certainly bring that up as an item for next meeting.
Would the public, public be allowed to weigh in at that point? Because I don't, I don't think I understood at the last meeting that that was an opportunity as a public hearing for them to come and weigh in, because Don actually did bring up, I mean, I know that it was jovial, but he brought up good points about the stairs inside, and, I mean, he just had some questions that I, I don't know, like, for instance, I posted up on Facebook, I know some of my colleagues posted up on Facebook, I only asked about the exterior. I didn't know the interior was up, open for discussion.
In my opinion, it's not the end of the town hall, when not the end of the citizens are all entitled to give their input, so certainly-
Not that I was against what they're doing, I just didn't visualize my mind how it's going to be. Maybe, once I see it, I'll know it is, but I'm trying to figure out how, how this is going to fit here, how this is going to fit here, it doesn't, you have to be moving a lot of stuff around, you know?
Just wants the public to weigh in, yeah, and have that same type of conversation with us, similar to how, how Ms. Siska and Ms. Erickson came tonight, so, and Mr. Lempert.
So we'll put it on the agenda for next month, uh, next meeting, I keep saying next month, next meeting. Maybe I should say next month, because I won't be at the chairman then, and then we can, someone else can deal with it. Okay, next meeting.
So, okay, I'm sorry, but, but I want to make sure for next meeting I have what you need.
Okay.
And, and right now, I'm a little confused, because I'm hearing layouts, I'm hearing colors of off spaces, I'm hearing, so what is it you'd like, I can certainly provide, I'm not sure that, I understand Don's confusion about, but it's not as if it's going to be a 3D model. It's going to be the same two-dimensional images. We can certainly invite the architect back so they can talk about those. I understand, because I, spatially, sometimes it's difficult to sort of put those in context, but, but really, it's going to be two-dimensionals, two-dimensional, right, layout as it was in mid-April, with some description of that. And so it is a little bit of a struggle sometimes to try to take the two-dimensional and making it come to life, but that's what we do have in terms of materials. And you, you want the architects at the next meeting to provide you with color samples? And wood materials? And flooring materials?
Are they, are they at that point?
No, but it, we're starting to meet less frequently. We're going to go out to bid on this project in, in early September, and, and that's relevant to cost and the cost of waiting, and so if there's going to be that level of discussion, we need to have it sooner than later, and I can encourage them to come-
The scene is over here, you can't have a difference between-
Yeah, just, I think it's just, it sounds like they're, they're on track, but I don't see any harm in look at it.
We haven't operated in that fashion, because that isn't the past how it was operated when this building was rehabbed. The piece that was diff, because we've, because we had a committee that was involved in that. What's different was, obviously, back then, there was a design committee of which we, we hadn't gotten to yet, but in terms of the interior layout, that was not something previously voted on by the board, it was a working committee, as it was this time. So, so am I-
I just wanted to look consistent and not choppy. That simple. And then pretty afterwards.
So, for the, for the next meeting, then, what we're asking for is, is another review of the internal layout.
Got it.
And then the establishment of this committee that will be looking into the, the decorating, and then if we could have some ideas of what the current plans are for carpeting and other architectural features that need to be determined.
It's just for a friendly, informative session. I'm not, I'm not looking for it to be contra, you know, confrontational. I think it's just, it's, I mean, where the board of selection, we should be kind of just keeping track of what's happening with it. That's all.
Okay, okay.
Do we stand up voting on the, what do you get?
Yes, that's done, Don, don't we?
Thanks.
We're going to take a motion for reconsideration if you're going to extend. Okay. So, we're going to move forward, then. The next is the three-way stop sign on Elm, High, and Water Streets. Mr. DPW Director.
Hello again.
Hello. Over the past three or four years, we've been doing improvements around the machine shop village, Elm Street, High, Water, things are coming together. This summer, we're going to be putting the, the street lighting in, and in the future, we have in the CIP, the, the streetscape and the intersection. And, and it's come down to stand that there's been many near misses, near misses, I got that, at the intersection. And so, it was thought that maybe a three or four-way stop would help improve safety and, and travel through the intersection. So I had the engineers that are doing the planning and design for us on the other projects take a look at it, and their suggestion was a three-way stop, because they didn't feel stopping people coming up High Street in icy conditions, not that we have icy conditions here, but coming up Elm, High Street would cause a problem. And so, I talked to both the police chief for their recommendation, he thought it was a good idea for, and try it for a four-month period, and talked to Eric Cifori in community development, who brought out some good points about making it a little bit friendlier for pedestrians going through there, and, and after all, that was sort of the idea of the whole project and the upgrades down there. So, we're requesting permission to try this out. We'll, we'll monitor it, both police and DPW, and certainly put up plenty of signage to let people know of the change and, and watch it.
Do you know how little, what's my stop sign? You got driveway, you got sidewalk, you get thirty-six inches.
Yep.
Okay. I'm giving, I'm gonna, I'm gonna-
So what will happen, will there be like a flashing light at first or something, or what?
No, what we usually do is put some flags up and some stop sign ahead type, type thing.
To let them, people know.
Yep.
I think people have a tendency to slow down when they get to that intersection anyway, so I think a stop sign would be almost natural.
Yeah, and I'm sure-
I think, I think the word was at our last meeting, people from out of town aren't familiar with the area, that's why they're having it. In that case, it's just going to stay out of town.
No, 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 the hope is to bring in lots of people from out of town to go frequent that area and the businesses that are housed there.
I'm going to vote no on this for, for one reason. I've been talking two years about the lithium trucks, and nobody gives a damn.
Lithium?
The delivery of all the trucks.
Oh, delivery trucks, I'm sorry.
Who park the wrong way, who park across sidewalks and crosswalks, and nobody says a damn thing. So we're going to solve this by putting a stop sign on top of, Sharp Hill is the right termination, top of Sharp Hill.
There you go, Sharp Hill.
So, if, if, if they want to have a, bring, come back with a plan to, to fix the other problem, you know, I have no problem with this, but just don't pick on one area, I think it's going to solve all your problems, because those trucks are brutal down there. I mean, that's, it's only-
Okay.
I, I, I agree with Don that there should be, we should address those, those trucks and the delivery problem over there. I don't know that holding up a stop sign, if it's a public safety, I mean, they're two separate public safety issues. I, I agree with you, I think it's frustrating, and you bring it up frequently, so it's, I'm-
I'm just going to give it a tug and no, because I, I've lived almost seventy-five years without it, and I think I can make it a few more. I don't see any accident reports, I don't see documentation of speeding, all I see is somebody wants a stop sign there. No, 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 no history here.
And, and I think it's for future, too, because, you know, we're bringing in more people, more residents in that building, so it's, it's for future safety as well.
But, but the thing that got me is, A, says we're going to, it's because of safety reason, we're putting a stop sign up, and you're just ignoring the real problem, which is the delivery trucks.
I kind of look at the delivery trucks as a two-edged sword. A, they're in the middle of the road, but B, they make people slow down coming down the hill, so, I don't know. But, I don't, I'm not-
If I went down there and parking those boxes, I'd get a ticket. Maybe I should stop doing that.
I understand where you're coming from.
Yeah.
One, one last point on that. We've been talking to the mill owners about traffic calming issues along there, and I think that's going to be, as we get into the streetscape issues, we can probably take care of some of those things, so, we'll look at that.
The biggest problem I see there, and it's, it's going to be fixed, going to be fixed at some point, but it's the edging out from Water Street. You have to con, you're edging out, edging out. You're halfway out before you can see anybody coming up.
Well, that stop sign is going to help, though, because at least you got, you got some control there.
You're still going to have to edge out.
Yeah, but you have control.
You already stop at that area, you already stopped there.
But you have control, you, you can see, I mean, another car coming is going to have to stop, though. You at least have-
No, there not going to be a stop sign coming up the hill, so you're still going to have to edge out.
Oh, I say they're not coming down.
No, not down, you're still going to have to edge out to see them coming up.
The mill owners did do a lot to improve that, that site going downhill, and they took those trees out and the bushes and stuff.
The trees are out, yeah.
That's much better than it used to be.
And Don, I think you brought it up to the owners the last time they were here, at the last meeting.
I did.
And I think that either was the first time they were here, or-
You know, I see it, it doesn't matter.
Well, I mean, they just-
We make promises all the time.
I was talking Janies.
When we, we make promises all the time about Little League fields, when people didn't want the new ball field, we wouldn't have a ball field below. Five years later, turn your head, and it's down there. People just, agreements they make, they just ignore. It happens all the time. I've been here too long, that's the problem. I have the history. I, I know how people work.
Baseball people?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we have a-
I move that the board of selection approve the request.
Second vote.
Okay, so we have a motion, Mr. Wong, and a second, Mr. Colagero, we'll call, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor? Oops, sorry, further discussion?
Can we have a, can I, a friendly amendment, meaning that we could just see how it works, and then maybe reevaluate if it's, it's in there?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, I was so-
That's in there.
I'm still trying to concentrate on three-way stop, it's kind of-
It's unusual.
Unless you want to make a contingent upon fixing the other problem, then they have to do it.
I do have to say that always that you've put in recently, you know, in the last few years, worked fantastic.
One, zero, six, one, cut, no surprise.
That works awesome.
It's actually in the-
It's in here, so we're going to take the vote with that in there, okay.
Right.
I'm so busy.
Review is in there.
It's great, it's in there.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all those, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Three-way stop, right?
Yeah, three-way stop, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No, so four to one.
I lost my rubber stamp. Who's winning?
Okay. Next, we have a affordable housing unit on 190, Bruce, is anywhere you can hang around for a little bit? We have one new business item that we might-
We'll get something by drift and change.
Or to deliver stuff, just, if you don't mind, I don't think-
No, not at all.
Okay. So we have affordable unit resale, 190 Chickering Road. Traditionally, we, we pass on this option. Mr. Manager, anything further on that?
Nope, so, typical kind of initiative we've been asked to pass in the past.
Any motion?
Mr. Manager, Mr. Chairman, move that the board of selectmen decline the right of purchase, of the right of first refusal to purchase the affordable housing unit at 190 Chickering Road, Unit 109D, Kittredge Crossing.
We have a motion, Mr. Colagero, a second, Mr. Stewart, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, unanimous. Okay, we have the request, a request from the police department to surplus some rifles. It's the first time I've seen that one.
What exactly? Let's contain within the request from the chaffins.
There are some automatic weapons and some, and some, some shotguns that they have been, had in service since 1998 that they want to replace and upgrade. I think in the request, it said that they could sell them for $450 apiece to, and that would go towards the purchase of new weapons to upgrade their arsenal.
Move that the board of selectmen approve the request of Police Chief Paul Gallagher to surplus rifles and shotguns per his memorandum.
We have a motion, Mr. Wong, will you complete with your motion?
No, I was just going to say to the town manager, date of May 26th, May 27th, 2015.
Okay, a motion and a second?
It feels like a-
All those, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, good. We also have a motion to surplus a cruiser that was totaled in an accident in April. Do we have a motion? Do we want to make a motion on that one?
It's total, who wants it? We're just bringing it to the, for metal?
I don't know, they just, they just want to get rid, they just still need a vote to get, to get rid of it.
Move that the board of selectmen approve the request of Police Chief Paul Gallagher to surplus police cruiser number 307, a 2012 Dodge Charger. Not reading the bin.
Okay, motion, Mr. Colagero, seconds, nearly, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, no, okay. Finally, we have a request from the board of, the trustees of the reservation to use town property for a walking trail to Stevens Pond, so my understanding, this is the, this was approved at town meeting last year, I, I think at least last year, to create a-
The funding was approved.
The funding was approved to create a walking trail from the Common down, right, to, to Wyer Hill.
How, can, I, I'm blank on this.
It's a long south of Stevens Pond.
From when you go across-
Pleasant Street. It's Pleasant Street.
Is it that, how do you start it at the Common, is what I'm, I'm-
Well, at the Common, it goes from, there's that trail that goes up towards Kittredge Farm, so if you're going down Mass Ave, there's a new bridge, there's a new walking or boardwalk.
That, that boardwalk, right, okay, so you go in there.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then it goes up toward, up Academy Road.
Yep.
Over Academy Road, and then down across Stevens Street, and then down to the pond. So I think what they're looking for-
It's getting a lot of use.
It's not completed yet, is it getting nice, huh? Well, I think what they're looking to do is move the fence back, right, along Stevens Pond, so that they can make a safer walking path to the, to Wyer Hill.
So, we take away from the playground, I don't understand. Didn't we just put this in? How does it affect the pavement of everything we just did at Stevie's?
They talked about that the last meeting, and he said it doesn't affect parking, but boy, it probably makes for a hotter turn when you're backing out.
I feel like it does affect the property.
The parking, he, it was, Rick Gorman said it doesn't, but-
Okay.
I know, it's hard to fathom that, it's pretty tight.
I don't know, I drove by Stevie's and I'm like, mm.
It's pretty tight.
I'm fine with that, I mean, I don't-
Just need skinny walkers or something.
Three to four feet is what they're looking for, along Pleasant Street.
There's always plenty of parking at Stevie's, it's not like-
It's not crowded. So do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Do we have a second?
Well, he mentioned, I thought it was inside Stevie's for some reason. Second, yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion, further discussion? Is it clear on what they're asking for, and, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
It's actually, will be much safer.
It will be much safer.
A lot of people drop their canoes in right, you know, right on the other side of, like, the playground, you know, that little area that-
Most of them are going to license them to choose.
We have a motion to move the licensing, do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On licensing.
Okay, first on this evening's agenda, thank you for waiting, is Joseph Lynch, manager of VFW 2104, you know, looking to build a deck, come on up.
Move approval.
Move approval.
Well, there is one outstanding thing I want to talk about.
He's been sitting here all night, let him say his piece.
I'm here for approval for the alteration, which is a deck, which we're gonna provide, an area, a sheltered area for patrons and members to smoke in. The only access to this deck area will be through our existing club, and we are a private club, so you'd either have to be a member to, to access the deck. We're gonna do all we can to buffer the noise, if any, out there. It's basically a cement slab with a roof foundation, I mean, with a roof overhang, which is the reason why it turns out that Jerry Brown indicated we needed a plot survey, a certified plot survey. But anyways, we're here for your permission as the Licensing Board. If you have any questions?
Everything is in order, except there, there is a, there's no plans in here, so is it coming out the side or the back?
It's coming out where our existing, the roof overhang that we have existing, if you look at the, at the lower level, there's a, there's an awning, it's kind of, looking out of the building, it's gonna be to the left of that awning.
Oh, okay.
And it's not gonna extend any further along than our existing structure, as far as the roof line.
Okay.
There were, I did drop off plans to-
I was just curious.
In essence, it's gonna look something like that.
Oh, great.
Alright, so our, our existing roof line goes to the, to the, to the, to right here, which is a beer room and stuff.
Yeah.
We did iron rail there? Yeah, we're, we're, it's on with the paint, whether to do iron, cost-wise, or whether we're just gonna do pressure treated or something, yeah, we're trying to keep our costs down.
And shrubbery.
It won't affect our existing parking at all, and once again, Jerry has given a, an approval just based on what we've, what I've shown him, and, but he does want that site plan certified because of, because of the roof. If it wasn't for a roof, he wouldn't need it.
Could you explain to me, I read in, in the documents that, so you have the glass door, so the bartender can-
Can see from internally, so they can, she can monitor what's going on out in the deck, correct.
Okay.
We're not gonna serve alcohol out there, but we would like it, we would like the patron to be able to take his beer, out there have a cigarette, and then come back in. We're not gonna encourage hanging around out there.
Okay, because it's a private club, we don't have to worry about minors and things like that.
Correct.
Okay.
Just the door, right? But it's gonna run all the way down this end of the building, and you just have the door.
Well, we have our existing entrance way, then when you come in, you take a right, and we have a window there right now, where that window is, is where the doorway is gonna go, whether it, whether it be a slider or a commercial-
It's not the glass door that you have now?
Correct.
Okay, okay. That makes, that's better.
So, it's, in order to access that, you still have to come in our normal entrance way, and then-
So you have to go, can I look at that again?
Sure.
My concern is not, my concern is not the building of it, it's the liquor going outside, that's the-
Right, well, the liquor-
It's enclosed.
It's enclosed. It will be enclosed.
For the fence. I mean, you have an excellent reputation, don't, don't, you know what I mean? And you control 4th of July incredibly well, and-
That's why I moved approval.
But I think the rest of the Board should take a peek at what it actually is, it's a porch outside.
It's a deck, porch.
Where they want to be able to just bring beers outside.
But it's fully enclosed on all three sides, and then the building is the fourth wall.
Oh, okay, so it is enclosed?
No.
It's got a fence.
A fence, okay, well, that's what I meant.
The fence is gonna be of a height that someone can't jump over.
Yeah, that's what I meant, it's, it's, there's a barrier, so people just don't, okay. That's what I meant.
Right.
Not enclosed like a, a building.
So is this facing the MacGillens parking lot?
Correct.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get-
Correct. What, what is there now is there existing air conditioning units, which we're gonna move further up on, on the other side of the building.
My only concern with the plan that you've given is that even with the glass door, the bartender only has the view of being able to see the third right here, I mean hypothetically-
Let's see, other change, the door's gonna be more centered. The existing land, the door's gonna be more in the center, you know, end of the bar, if she had access. If we put a slider, a double slider in there, she had more, or he or she would have more-
That would probably be wiser.
Only, only because, I mean, right now, you could have people, I mean, there would be, there would be people, correct, that could just drive up, for instance, pass a beer this way, I mean, that's-
I mean, they could do that for my, they could do that now, I mean, not from our building, but-
This is outside of the realm of people working there, unless you're gonna place an employee outside. What we're trying to do right now is hash it out, so you don't get in trouble next year after it's built, and kids are throwing beers over the, because I would have if I was a kid and it was there.
But you wouldn't be inside.
Well, why would you throw a beer if they're inside, why would you throw a beer over? Because there's only certain bottles-
Because then I don't have to pay for my beers inside.
Well, we don't do, can't most people-
Ding 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 ding, same thing that happened up at the Knights all the time.
I don't know where you hang out, Jerry, but it's-
I'm just saying, I've seen it more than once.
So I know that that's funny, but that's, that's actually, really, and I have to say, it's, it's not, it's not teenagers, I mean, it's, it's, you see adults, I mean, I'm, I mean, it's actually adults that are typically the worst offenders, that I personally, I have no study to back that up, that will sneak cans in the back door when you don't have, when you, when you as a bartender can't see the back door, or can't see where people are congregating, I mean, at the end of the night, you go, you pick up trash, and you wonder where did all those cans come from, you don't sell cans, but-
For a private club, most of the people, and they're members, are not gonna try to, if, because if they get caught bringing a beer, and they're, they're thrown out of the place, so it's not like we're, it's not like the general public, and I understand where you're coming from on that, Phil, but-
But the members bring in general public, and, I mean, I, I'm just saying, I, in my 30s as well as in my 40s, I saw it more than once at the Knights. It's going to happen, so the concern is, how high is the fence?
Right.
And what kind of eyes does the bartender have on what's going on out there?
Correct.
You know what I mean? That, 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 that's, that's the only thing, it's, and in all honesty, I, I don't think anyone sitting on this board is looking to give you a hard time or not make this happen.
Correct.
But we want it to happen in the best way, so that in six months from now, you guys aren't in trouble for something, you know what I mean? That's the point. And, and, and I think it's a really legitimate concern that we don't really know what kind of fencing you're using, the only thing, in the paperwork, that, that's, that's, and we don't really know what kind of door you're putting in, and, you know, everything else has gone through fine, there are some, a, a couple of items from, from Lieutenant McCarthy, for instance, he doesn't know if the, if the sprinkling needs to be extended because of the roof.
That's, that's addressed in the plans.
But we don't have any, that's, I think, part of it. For the, for the licensing aspect, that's what you're before us for tonight.
Correct.
To allow you to have alcohol out there.
Correct.
I don't know if this board has enough information to say yes or no tonight, but that's up to my fellow members.
Move approval again?
I'll second that with a, with an amendment, I probably didn't do that the correct way, that, that the center door is glass as you've described.
Correct.
So the bartender can see, just as you've described, and can you give me a height on that fence that you will commit to, that it will be part of the amendment?
Well, I don't, I'm, I'm not an architect, but I think that, I think Jerry had mentioned four feet maybe, or four, or four feet-
Okay, whatever the, I would amend it that it would be at the, the recommendation of the Building Commissioner.
Right.
So that it's-
I mean, we can make it five feet, six feet, I mean, whatever you-
That keeps people jumping over, I guess.
What, four feet? They have spikes on that fence.
I know.
So Joey, is there gonna be any other type of surveillance out there at all that-
Uh, we, currently, we don't have plans for it, but if need be, we could put a camera out there, I mean, we don't have, or how about-
You want me to add that to the amendment, and a security camera on, with eyes, is, is that something that you are willing to do, or?
I think you would be happy with that, actually, as, as an establishment, but-
Well, we'll, we'll do whatever you, I mean, we're willing to do that, absolutely.
It can be fairly inexpensive, a small camera.
Yeah, they are pretty inexpensive now, so that you would do the glass door, as you described, to be in the center, so the bartender could have a view.
Correct.
That the fence would be at a height that is recommended by our Building Commissioner.
Correct.
And that there would be a security camera that the bartender could also monitor from inside the building.
Okay.
And you probably have a monitor in your office too, you know, when you're there.
Alright. But I guess the question I have, does this all have to, I'm looking for approval, so I can go to Jerry, so Jerry could actually, obviously, I need that site plan, which she says it's just contingent on that, but if you put these contingencies on it, if he gets his approval, do I, do I then have to come back here to get approval again? I'm trying to figure this, because we're trying to get this up and running and moving, and, and doing it in the right way, obviously.
Right, you're before us to give you permission to have alcohol out there.
Correct.
So, what you're asking for is code stuff, I'm, I don't know.
Not necessarily, because-
I don't think we're acting as licensing, I don't know.
No, no, but we as licensing have absolutely insisted that they enclose certain areas, and we have, we have insisted that people put security cameras into our different establishments. The only thing is height of fence, well, we've asked for fencing in the glass door, I, I think it's, we have to have, our bartenders must have the view of the facility.
And that was where I think some of the-
And the camera would help that, if you wanted to, plus the glass door, which would be there.
I'm all about alfresco, outside.
I think we're worrying too much about the fence, I know at the 4th of July, they have a, a rail that goes around where you serve alcohol, and that works fine, I, I don't see, I, I don't know. It's to our best interest too, so that no one can come in from the outside.
Oh, positivity, I mean, that's the thing, rent out the upstairs, you know what I mean?
I mean, we're, we're-
I mean, and that's the whole point, I don't wanna see at the end of the summer, someone says-
We're not gonna put a three-foot fence up, I mean, Jerry's already indicated a certain height, and if, if need be, we'll add another foot to it, I mean, we're not, plus it's not gonna be level from the ground, it's gonna be, the way that it's graded, it might be another two feet to the ground, in addition to the, to the height of the fence, so I mean, it's not something that anyone's gonna be able to scale.
Then we have neighbors right there, but they've always been there, and I don't think that's necessary.
I just wanted to make sure that the bartender servers have visibility, that's the only concern.
And that, that you don't have minors just strolling in, is my thing, so that's the fence, so, I think, I think we've got it covered, so, Madam Chair, if you, if they want to vote on the-
We have a motion and a second with amendments, let's run down exactly what we're looking for, which is-
I'm gonna put my amendment and have that come to vote, and then-
Yes, please.
Okay, so my amendment is, as I said, that they will have a glass center door, there will be a security camera that the bartender will be able to view, as well as the glass center door, and that there will be a fence to the specifications of our Building Commissioner.
I'll second that amendment.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Voting on the amendment. Back to the original motion to allow-
I think Donnie moved approval, and I seconded it.
Donnie moved approval, and you seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're also?
Alright.
Good luck.
And good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck to us.
Was a horror show.
Well, you just couldn't see, that was very, I'm being very diplomatic right now, you just could, the bartender-
We know exactly what went on, I'm done.
Okay, I get you guys have what inside information.
It can just be really tough if you have so many.
Alright, next on our agenda this evening, we have James Pino, I hope I pronounced that correctly, Pino?
Pino.
Pino, thank you, and sorry. Fresh Choices at Eaglewood, to be doing business as Be Good. Why don't you tell us a little bit about the restaurant that's going in?
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board of Selectmen, Jim Pino, 198 Lancaster Road, looking to open, well, seeking approval for the Common Vic license and entertainment license for a Be Good restaurant. It's a, it's a small chain based out of Boston, approximately about 20, 25 stores, currently, I would be a franchisee, most of the stores that they operate now in Boston are corporate-owned stores. It's a, it's a fast, casual, healthy, fresh alternative, they serve burgers, chicken, all-natural, no, no hormones, matter of fact, everything comes from local New England farms, fresh seasonal salads, smoothies, shakes, things like that. We're not seeking any type of liquor license, the operating hours would be 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., seven days a week, and that's pretty much it.
That's great.
Is there outdoor seating, they're not, I'm not-
There is outdoor seating, there's a pad that-
You don't have to worry about fencing them in.
Yeah.
There is a fence. There is a fence, there is an outdoor pad that does exist currently at the Eaglewood Plaza there.
Yeah, it's great, it's great, I'm excited for it.
Great.
Do we have any questions from?
You just wanna tell us, again, you told us the hours, price points and things, it's kind of your time to also advertise it a little more.
It's about, I would say, average transaction is probably about eight to $10 for the full meal.
When are you looking to open, what do you think?
We were shooting for the end of June, but it looks like we're probably gonna end up pushing that back to probably just after the 4th of July, so probably-
Which isn't bad, which isn't bad, at school, once school gets in session again too, at Mary Mac, it's great. I would also encourage you to make sure that you check out the North Andover Merchants Association, very active association here in North Andover, easily found on the web. It's a, it's a, it's a good organization for, for new businesses in particular, but I'm super excited about this coming to town.
Madam Chair, I move the Board of Selectmen, acting as License Commissioners, approve a Common Victular license and entertainment license for Fresh Choices LLC, doing business as Be Good.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good luck.
Great, thank you very much.
Next on licensing agenda this evening is Jorge and Concepcion Pennella, did I get that right?
Dude, yes.
Excellent, alright, but Dicor Restaurant?
Dicor.
Excellent, okay, looking for a Common Victular as well as your entertainment license, you're going in with the old falafel, right, on Ozzy Street, you're, okay, why don't you tell us a little bit about the restaurant?
My name's Fran Pennella, my mother Concepcion Pennella, and my dad George Pennella, we're looking to take over Falafel Cafe and Grill and put in Dicor Restaurant, which is an Italian and Argentinian restaurant, family-owned, so it will be us taking care of it, it seats about 25 people, and we're looking-
Same deal as our last one, price points, what kind?
Price points, we, appetizers start at about $8, and dinner goes till about $42, which serves two people, sit down, yep.
We have two people, delivery and lunch.
Now, tell us a little bit about Argentinian food, I don't, not all of us, I think, have been there.
Argentinian food is a lot of meats, we prep a lot of seasonings that we put on our meats, we make empanadas, she makes empanadas, I should say, more likely.
It's a dough with different stuff, where ground meat and eggs, and another with chicken and eggs and all of, another difference where ricotta and corn, with ham and cheese.
Oh, okay, no liquor license in here though?
No liquor license, no.
We're catering to the lunch crowd, kind of like.
We will have catering. We're doing delivery, we're doing tacos.
Great, does anybody have any other-
When are you looking to open, when?
We're hoping for next week.
Next week, wow.
Yeah, we were waiting for this.
Well, let's get this thing moving then.
So, once this thing goes through, then-
Alright, Madam Chair, move that the Board of Selectmen, acting as Licensing Commissioners, approve a Common Victular license and entertainment license for Dicor Restaurant.
Great, do we have a second on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, welcome to North Andover, best of luck.
Thank you.
Same to you, check out the Merchants Association. Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. Next on our agenda is licensing would be Scott Grandware for the Farm Stand for a mobile food license. Thanks for hanging around.
Hello, no problem. My name is Scott Grandware, and I'm here requesting permission for my application for the mobile food permit. My business has been open just under two months, I'm based in Malden, that's where my shared kitchen is, and I started out with a spot in Malden at Malden Center on April 9th, or 7th, I believe, and I've been vending there since then, and I picked up a spot in Malden Apartment Community called The Chase, and I will soon be starting another office park in Linfield, which will be a third location for me, so my application here for you today is for a fourth location, which would be Nancy Chippendales Dance Studios, and I intend to vend there probably two days per week. I'm intending on one week night, because their business hours are typically pickup-after-school hours from around 3:00 to 7:00, and then Saturdays would be a great day, because they're very busy for early in the morning all the way until probably 7, 8 o'clock at night, and we would focus on a lunchtime shift for that as well. Also, in the future, any sort of special events that North Andover has, I'd like to try to be a part of as well, and try and enhance the experience there, and I don't have any other locations planned for North Andover just yet, because I wanted to get permitted and up and running before I started asking other people if they'd be interested in having me vend food near their place of business, or wherever the place of interest might be, so. In terms of the business itself, we are a health-focused food truck, started out as 100% vegetarian, but I just recently added a chicken wrap dish, which seemed to be in high demand from the customers in the first early goings. Brought a couple of samples, maybe if you could pass them around, so you can see what they might start down to us. Menu will likely change over time and seasonally, based on produce selection and just keeping things interesting as well, so, like the other proposals before me, the price point, which is not on the menu that you see before you, everything is about $5 to $8 as, as it stands right now, portions are a little bit smaller, everything is prepackaged coming off the truck, it's a grab-and-go style menu, works very well in terms of customer service and speed of service, we just did an event last Friday in Lexington, where we actually had people leaving lines and coming over to my truck because of that speed, so, also, sort of enhances the ease of operations in terms of loading food onto the truck, getting it, well, it's already fully prepared, but in terms of getting it to the point of service for the customer, and then obviously cleanup and cleanliness within the truck itself is, is very much simplified, so, if there's anything else I could explain to you, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Everything's in order, the only thing that was outstanding from Lieutenant McCarthy, I believe, was he was looking for your permit for the suppression system?
Yeah, I had it sent to him this morning, and I brought a copy of it here.
Okay, super.
I don't have any extra copies, so-
No, that's okay, as long as you have it, we can double-check with them.
See it right now.
Awesome, that, I know that was the only thing that was outstanding, so, I don't know, do we want a copy? He sent it over to, we're good.
And I would just ask if you're familiar with our, our food vending truck bylaw that we have in place, that restricts some of the places that you can actually park in town?
Yeah, I had researched it when I was planning the entire project over the past couple of years, I know I saw it, maybe it was in March or May of 2013, 14, you guys passed it, so it's two streets downtown, I never had any intentions of vending there, I have a personal connection with the Chippendales Dance Studio, so it was kinda just my focus to vend there, and truthfully, any other locations that I would pick up would be also private locations, because I just feel it's, well, and not to put this in the wrong way, but North Andover doesn't seem like it has much of a foot-traffic cluster in any areas, so I don't see a, a public vending site much to my advantage, so, private locations, yes, and it's also-
Have you ever been to a soccer game in town?
Well, yeah, that, that would be the one exception, would be like Little League or recreational soccer and stuff like that, or, or special events.
Well, I think once you're out and about, people may start to invite you to a lot more.
Yeah, while the future's-
Also, the 4th of July and Fall Festival get to be a lot of people at those events too.
But you have to pay a permit to the festival people.
Sure.
It's month, uh, do I have a-
Okay, we have a, oh, I'm sorry, I did.
That's okay, we, we have, do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Discussion?
So, Madam Chair, it was brought to my attention by the town manager that if you look at what the Board of Health allowed and what Scott's application asks for, the Board of Health approved him for operation hours active, so that's page 96 in our packet. It gave him active hours of Monday through Saturday, 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. or 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. And then in his application, higher up, it asks to be in operation at 3:00 p.m. So, I've never encountered this before, I'll defer to the more experienced.
Well, I actually heard about it, but I thought because it made pass-through muster that it was all ready to go.
Is that, is that, do we, at that point, have discretion?
Does the Board of Health have discretion?
Yeah, why is the Board of Health restricting hours?
Why is the Board of Health restricting hours? They should just be approving... I'm concerned...
I mean, it doesn't seem that you wouldn't be healthy at 3:00 o'clock, I suppose. I mean, you're healthy until 2:00 and you're healthy after 4:00. I would imagine you're okay at 3:00.
Your prep time and the sink and, I mean, no, the time that he leaves where your kitchen is, puts it on the truck and brings it here, maybe it has something to do with that? Does anybody, no?
Board of Health doesn't control hours, we control that.
There is a difference.
Was there any time issue raised with the Board of Health? I mean, on these hours or...
We had the Board of Health meeting recently and never came up.
Is that always identified on the Board of Health permit you included in the package?
Sure, yeah. This is actually the first that's being brought to my attention.
So, you didn't have a copy of the Board of Health permit?
I do have a copy of the Board of Health permit right here.
You were referring to lower left corner as all its hours active?
Yep.
Why?
I mean, and I don't know how in, how concrete that is, if that's simply, I know this sounds goofy to say, suggestion. It's on the permit. I just wouldn't want us to approve him, he be in operation, then all of a sudden he'd be violating the Board of Health's... I mean, I don't want to see us setting you up to get in trouble at any point because I think it's great that you're coming to town and that you, or you should say that you want to come to town and that you'd be forced. But that's...
I'm concerned, I mean, I'm confused because I don't know how the Board of Health restricts hours.
I think, again, I don't know this...
But it has to have something to do with the food because you're not preparing on that truck. I know there was an issue with the sink, I do know that.
They gave him a hard time for an hour in a stupid sink.
But...
Yeah, but why? There's a reason that they gave these specific hours.
Well, I could see the four-hour time window being correspondence with the time-temperature control. However, I have adequate refrigeration on my truck and I've been at events for six hours plus where generator, as long as it's operational, there's no issues.
He is only asking for four-hour increments of operating anyways, because you asked for 3:00 to 7:00 and they approved you for 4:00 to 7:00.
Yes.
And then Saturday's 11:00.
More hours and they're giving less.
Could this just be a misunderstanding on the Board of Health's part that they didn't, they didn't...
Because, I mean, you're, they even you permission to operate for a four-hour increments anyways from 11:00.
Let me interrupt you for one second, though. They haven't given permission at all, it just says hours active. Is that what you told them the night of your meeting? Maybe casually, this is what you were thinking you were going to do?
Unless I had it on my initial application, that was my only intention, so.
Well, there's no restrictions, I mean, there's also section for restrictions. It doesn't say restricted to those hours.
Active, hours active. So, something, they somehow thought these were going to be your hours? And they're not. So, I'm not sure we can approve you this evening until we figure out what's... I'm not sure.
Is that celebrity college hero said, so the hours, the number of hours match up?
No, they don't.
No, well...
He's asking for four, they said three on here.
No, 11...
Three-hour blocks.
Yeah, that's true.
Three-hour blocks and four-hour blocks. And I'm thinking that the Board of Health restricted, that there was some sort of a conversation about how long the food is good from... I don't know, I know there was a big deal about a sink, I don't know, but nobody...
What happens Fourth of July when it's vendors up there all day?
That's what I mean, I don't know.
No, but I, I mean, perhaps it was...
It makes no sense, no sense at all.
I guess we can't, it's unfortunate that there's no one from the Board of Health at Community Development, just to, only to shed light because, again, if we approve this, if we approved everything that was presented without discussing this...
Usually this goes in after you have your victual, common victual license and your hours of operation, generally. You know what I'm saying? When they go to a restaurant, they, the restaurants, they already know what they're operating. When I have my pool inspected, we already know what we're operating. And so, your permit from the Board of Health states those hours because you already know what you're operating. This states these hours, but he didn't know what he was operating because he came to us after the fact and he hasn't really started yet. Am I thinking...
So, can we approve it contingent upon clarification from the Board of Health?
I don't see why not.
I personally would like to know if they do, or if they intend on trying to impose a restriction on the hours because that's quite a concern for me.
Mr. Manager? Is it possible, hypothetically, a scenario where if we approved him and he was operating in hours that weren't laid out by the Board of Health, could he potentially face repercussions from the Health Department?
They can't set hours.
My question, too, is, is in businesses that change their hours, they don't change, they don't have the Board of Health come in again and change the hours. The only concern here is that the Board of Health gave three hours where he's looking for four. And I agree with Selectman Valancourt that we could approve contingent upon finding out what... Is that extra hour a Board of Health issue or not? And I think that's what we need to clarify.
Sure.
So, you wouldn't have to come back if we clarified, but you may not be issued the license if it isn't. Your hours may change, too. Is that...
So, if it's not a problem, he gets the license? If it is a problem, would he be notified immediately?
He's going to be notified either way?
Okay. Again, I don't want you to be, I don't want you to be out there and all of a sudden find out you're, I don't know. That's exactly, that's not what you want in front of, right, the same crowd. If you're going to be in front of the same crowd every day, you don't want the Board of Health coming in there and, I don't know.
So, I move the Board of Selectmen, acting as Licensing Commissioners, approve the mobile food license for the farm stand contingent upon clarification by the Board of Health on the hours active that's stated on the license.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, we'll let you know. Thank you.
However, Scott, in the event that you are successful business, I believe Ms. Watson has...
I've already thrown it out there.
Okay, okay, okay. Well, he was at a meeting, too, that's...
Oh, yes, I did hear, yes.
You have to work him on three hours a day, so he won't qualify.
Yeah, right, okay. Final items this evening on licensing are two weddings at Smolik Farm. All items are in order on both.
So, I will move approval for the Lauren Ristello, Brandon Baker wedding on June 13th, from, which is a Saturday, from 4:00 to 10:00.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
I'll also move approval for the Josh Berger, Elizabeth Larson wedding on June 20th, which is also a Saturday, 2015, from 4:00 to 10:00.
All those in favor? Aye. You're all set? Thanks. Can I have a motion to move out of licensing? Oh, all those in favor, I'm sorry. We're out of licensing.
Okay.
I'm getting it's not, I'm getting it.
So, I'd like to take one item out of order if we could, because we had a couple of people waiting around. So, instead of taking public hearing, I mean, old business, we don't have any public hearings. I'd like to make a motion, or I'd like to move new business first. We have a couple of folks waiting here to talk about new business. We don't have it listed, it came in late. But Mr. Corr from the North Andover Country Club is here, looking for an approval to repaint the crosswalks on Grape Pond Road.
Nobody's looking to help us out.
Due diligence, yeah.
There we go, good man.
And that's also, Bruce, why I asked you to just hang around. Hey, doing Peter?
I wish it's just an agenda. Any neighbors that might be concerned about this?
I don't know.
Because they're adding them, they're not just repainting them.
Yeah, Stephen, do you want to?
I'm the manager of North Andover Country Club. Basically, what we're looking for is just that we have three existing crosswalks we're looking to repaint. And there's an additional one that's listed as number, crosswalk number two here, that due to the construction project, adding another crosswalk in there for crossing the street. And there's a path that comes down now with the new construction project that'll stop right at the end of the street there where there is no crosswalk to continue across through the gravel path to go down to the golf shop. Not sure what the exact order of business is for it, but I figured I'd let you guys know and...
Yeah, the request did come in late and we touched base with Bruce and there was, there is a procedure for approval from the Board of Selectmen. So, we can talk about the three existing one, if there's a concern about the fourth one that's being added.
Yeah, I mean, for me, I have no problem. If they want to paint them and do the three that are existing and paint them, I can approve that right now, adding one without putting it on an agenda for a public comment. I don't know, some people may, there are people that drive up and down that, that live right here and right here that may be annoyed that there's yet another crosswalk.
Just publicly publicize it as well, too, right, weighing in? I think, I don't think that's unreasonable.
I mean, but thank you very much for painting the other ones, but I just think we should give neighbors an opportunity to chime in.
Okay. So, we can certainly add that to our next agenda. So, I asked Bruce to stick around. Bruce, did you have any comments or...
No, I, the only thing that I mentioned, they asked me about it, they're going to paint it what, in between the white lines, you're going to paint it green. Is that, yeah, it has to have the white lines, obviously. Just maintain it, you know, as you go, what's going to happen with them, as any of those, as cars go over them, you know, it's going to wear out, as long as they continue to maintain the green. I think that's fine with me.
Okay, and they're green now, anyway, the existing ones?
Yeah, the existing ones are white lines on the side with the green in the middle.
Okay. So, I guess, understand that we probably need, we do need to advertise it because they're our neighbors. So, by advertising the fourth one, it gives neighbors an opportunity to chime in on it.
Absolutely.
So, we'll make a motion?
I move to allow the three to be painted and done and say thank you very much for doing so and to add the fourth one to the next agenda. I don't...
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So, if we could just get, we'll add it to the next agenda, make sure we publicize that and...
Like to look at?
No, this is fantastic, I just want people to know it's, it's going to be talked about, that's all.
Okay.
I just bragged about how transparent, we're the most transparent government in the Mary Mac Valley, you know? Keep cozying up to the country club, you know? No, thank you, actually, though, for maintaining them.
All right, thanks. Okay, we'll move to old business. We have to sign the collective bargaining agreement. Mr. Manager?
Yes, you approved the memorandum of understanding relative to the collective bargaining agreement that was ratified by the police union, that's the patrol and sergeant union. This is the collective bargaining agreement that goes along with that memorandum of understanding that you approved at last meeting. So, it really is a signature, you've already voted on it, it's the signature process.
All right, so there's no vote needed for that, we're just...
We can just sign.
Yeah. Okay, then moving on to public comments. Stan?
Public comment?
Yeah.
Don't encourage him.
I just wanted to remind everyone about graduation. We're going to still pray for good weather, right? And so far, so good, we're looking good. And also, on Thursday night, we have our scholarship night at the high school, 6:30. Welcome to come, a lot of, you know, our student athletes get awards and scholarships at that time. So, that's another great opportunity for the community to come together to honor our graduating seniors. So, we're really always looking forward to that. Looks like we're going to have good weather for that, so we're good to go. That's it.
So, the graduation, is this coming Friday night?
Correct, correct. 6:00, Welch Field. Be there. It's going to be a good, good time was had by all.
Okay. And then finally, we have the town manager's report, update on trash and recycling issues.
Do you want to let the board know, certainly the board is aware from the calls you've been receiving, an update for the residents, some of which may know. Back beginning in November, we started to receive some level of complaints, originally of the leaf pickup last fall. Obviously, the winter was a particularly difficult winter for any number of things, including trash pickup. But when the winter snow has cleared, we started to see additional complaints relative to both trash and recycling pickup, also complaints from the schools and the public buildings about the dumpsters that are traditionally picked up on a weekly basis, not being picked up for a period of time. Those complaints have increased. May probably represents the largest number of complaints that we've received since November. I don't have an exact number for you, but it's substantial. Wanted the public to know, we certainly are aware of it. We hear you, we receive and log all the complaints that we get from residents through various sources, most of which are telephone, but certainly some of them are emails. We're aware of those complaints. We've asked or have begun a process through the contract to conduct a performance review of the contractor relative to the service levels. And that performance review will be completed the next week or 10 days or so. And then based upon that, the results of that performance review and the continued service of the contractor, we'll have to make decisions relative to the contract. So, wanted the public to know that we're aware of the complaints. We see them ourselves, quite frankly, we hear about them from various sources and that the town is working to try to remedy the situation. We recognize that trash pickup is a particularly important service that we provide and it's our obligation to make sure that that service continue at the level that residents expect.
Mr., you know the complaints are done.
There were 324 complaints in the month of May, it was the highest...
Complaints are now done.
We have 324 complaints in the month of May, the highest number of complaints we've received in the history of the trash contract. There's no indication at this point that we've seen any abatement of that. In fact, the number of complaints in the last week in May exceeded those in the first week in May. So, again, we're hoping it works out. We've had a longstanding positive relationship with the contractor, but at this point, we need to see results. And we haven't seen those yet.
Complaints are done, they're all over.
Oh, that's what you mean? No more complaining, move forward. Do the right thing.
I'm very deeply involved in this, I know what's going on.
Being proactive in tackling this because, I mean, it's, I know some of us go on...
It was five trucks in North Andover, instead of three. Two of them came out of Salem. Two new drivers came out of Salem, they fired four of their drivers.
Okay.
They got a whole new, they got a whole new lineup.
As I said, maybe those trucks in Salem will end up here in North Andover and service will...
Yep.
But prior to the last 10 months, it was a very good relationship.
I think you're going to see this month, I don't think, you'll see very few. Probably like the couple about truck 53 that was false, but that's, we got the email on that one. Beavis weren't working, they weren't.
So, what you're saying is that the...
From now on, I'd be very surprised if any complaints come through, prefabricated.
Over the next couple of weeks, they're, they're increasing the number of trucks and staff people is what the provider has said he would be doing, so that we're expecting improvement between now and the beginning of July.
I'd like to make a public complaint. That is that, it makes it very difficult to manage a contract when the conversations between the contractor do not happen with the office that manages the contract, and that's my office. I think it's made it extraordinarily difficult. It's the only case I've found in 20 years of my professional career it's been the case. And when, even though we're communicating with the contractor, the communication, we're not receiving the communication back, it's coming through other channels, which has made it very difficult to respond to the public because what I, what I want to believe and hear anecdotally, I'm not, I'm not hearing in the form of responses directly from the contractor. So, if anyone can affect that change, it would really help us be better with our residents so that I can relay all we hope happens based upon information I've received, based, rather than based on information which I'm not getting directly from the contractor, which quite frankly, the contractor, contract calls for.
The office, the town offices or town hall are the ones receiving all the complaints and if they don't have the information to provide, then it's...
The company's not providing...
I mean, I know I called myself three times last week because my recycling pickup is on, was on Wednesday of last week because of the holiday and it didn't get picked up until Friday afternoon.
See, if they have problems, they're supposed to notify a town what their problems are. That person has now been demoted, he's not in charge anymore.
But that, I think that you just spoke to exactly what Andrew was saying. You know somebody's demoted, but he doesn't. So, his office is getting 350 calls between his and Bruce. But they're telling, and I say telling because I keep hearing it from a couple of people that, oh, it's this, it's going to be good, it's going to be that. But they're not responding to our executive officer, who is Andrew. They shouldn't be speaking to us, they should be speaking directly with the people in this building. Because in all honesty, I feel that when one of us are picking up the phone and calling them, it's purely lip service. Because if it wasn't, then they would be speaking with the person who's managing the contracts. That's my take on it, because I have not seen any improvement. And I keep being told it's going to get better.
I haven't seen any improvement either.
Right, and that's, you know what I mean?
The scary, the scary or more frustrating thing.
They like to tell us, it's lip service.
And it's been, it's been several months, I mean, this preceded my time on the board that these complaints have been made and the weather subsided.
It's started since last summer, end of last summer.
Again, but, and that's, that's the point, is why suddenly is there this change? We don't know, because they've not been communicating with our chief executive. So, it's, I'm glad that you at least bring this information.
Of course, communicating is not, but now they're demoted.
Well, then who's in charge? Because they're not communicating either.
Yeah, if he's been demoted, we don't know who...
We don't know who's in charge at all, then.
Who should be communicating.
You're in charge?
No, but, I mean, Don, really, I mean, we've talked, we've, we've... No, but, I mean, Don, really, I mean, we've talked, we've, we've exchanged emails with the town manager, I mean, we've had people calling us, you know, after 9:00, 10:00 o'clock at night. I mean, I know you're not on Facebook and it's, there are times when social media can amplify things, however, I think that we all agree that it's, it's a pretty, it's pretty representative of where we are as a community, and this...
They definitely had problems, but in the past, they've been good. And it's my, it's my belief that these problems are now over.
So my, I had an operations question, because you mentioned that they brought in extra trucks.
When I left for my meeting, my recycling was still sitting in front of my house, 6:30.
I mean, my, so you had mentioned that they brought in extra trucks from Salem, is that a temporary fix?
Salem's done.
I, I know Salem's done, but why was there a reduction in truck service to North Andover in the first place?
Because they were all broken down.
So now they've brought trucks in, but, and, I mean, I know this is hypothetical, but I mean, I just want to make sure there's a long-term fix here. It's not like, well, they just brought in, you know, these extra trucks because they happen to have them. If they get more contracts, are they now spreading themselves too thin again? I, it's just, this is, for many people, this is the only interaction they have with town services. I mean, you know, yes, they drive on roads, there can be, there can be potholes, but it's, trash pickup is essential.
It also amplifies everything else. When I go to a track meet and people are flipping out because there's trash all over their yards, there's trash up and down the street, it hasn't been picked up, three weeks in a row, you know, the neighbors, it's been late, 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 late at their home, they come to the high school or they go pick up their kids at the middle school or any of the elementary schools, and you have weeks of recycling, weeks of trash. It amplifies that, if the grass is a little too long, they're all complaining about that. Because now, as Phil said, their only interaction with town services, a lot of times, aside from the schools, is trash, so they're so angry about the trash, that's all they see is, well, and they don't do this, and they don't do that, and they don't do this, it, it has a snowball effect. And I, and I think I've definitely seen that with really sweet, reasonable people, but over the last school year in particular, people are so frustrated. Myself, I know in, in last August and September, the first couple of times I reached out to Bruce, like, hey, how come they wouldn't take my recycling, it's still here? And it was, put a better sticker on it, mark it better, do this, do, okay, okay. Well, then I did everything I was supposed to do and it still didn't get picked up, and I'm like, what? And in the beginning, they would maybe come back the next day and grab it quick, but it's only escalated since, you know? It's, for me, I see one excuse after the other.
Keep an open mind, look forward.
Listen, a lot of people in town pay big taxes just for us to pick up their trash because their kids are grown and what have you.
My concerns, too, have been the schools, I mean, we've seen, we've seen overloading of, of the school trash to the ground and...
You know what?
Why?
Because I checked those out.
What's that?
Well, I don't think we should be afraid or held hostage by a company and be afraid to talk about how bad it is, it's this bad.
I'm not saying that, but I just, I know Select and Stewards going in a different direction, I think we should just...
I went with Billy Thompson to check the schools out. And one of those so-called bags that were piled up on the top, they shut the cover and there was no trash inside. What am I to believe?
I saw a picture of trash all over the...
I live across the street from a school.
I believe what I saw in a picture was trash all over the ground.
I live right across the street from an elementary school.
Either way, I don't think any, anybody in this board can, can deny that it's been a problem. And it is true, but this is also the first time we've been able to have a public discussion about this, and I, I do think that the public has just, they, they just want to know that this is something we're absolutely, we're attenuated to, and that, you know, we're sensitive to the importance of making sure as, from a public health perspective, this gets addressed. I, I think that if there was one message I'd like to send to our contractors, it's, please communicate with our full-time staff that we hire to make sure this town is run as well as it is. Please, I mean, because it sounds like they're communicating with you.
The owner of the company?
No.
Well, the owner of the company is the one person we're, we're speaking about, I, I don't, we don't, that's the person, it's the primary contact.
Somebody in charge of the trash room.
Well, I'm not getting responses from the owner of the company, that's the bottom line. They, they need to be communicating directly when there's a trash issue, that's, you know, so...
We're just going to give some time, let it go for a while, it's going to, it's going to smooth out.
I don't want to belabor this point, yeah.
Let it play out, yeah.
The all-terrace is very expensive, very expensive.
But either, so, that aside, they have to communicate with our town manager.
Absolutely have to. Well, then they need to.
Then that's even more concerning.
I screamed that very day.
Okay.
Then that's even more concerning is correct.
Because this is why, I mean, the performance has been exceptional, Mr. Manager, but I mean, he can't do his job if our contractors... No, I, I mean, I mean, that office does a very good job at serving our community and they can't serve a very important piece of this community, or aspect of how town government directs with people if our contractors aren't communicating with them. And it reflects poorly on us, as a board.
We also have trash, too, I mean, it affects all of us.
I don't, but... I have private.
We have trash and recycling, too.
Oh, you're right.
I do.
He does, it's a private company. And private companies at his condominium complex, if they don't do what they're supposed to do, they get fired. Just saying.
Yes.
I'm just saying, that's all.
Well, that was a lively discussion on the trash and recycling.
I'm glad we actually had a public one finally, though.
And, you know, we want to make, let people know that it's not something we are not considering and not, we don't know about and we're working hard on it and we're trying to get it resolved, so it's definitely something that's on all top of our minds, because four out of five of us also have to...
But I live in this community and if your trash isn't picked up, it's all dirty and I'm tired of blaming you, Dick, for all of this, so...
So we'll move on, ask the manager, do we have any questions?
Billy's not here.
We're all about trash.
We're all about trash, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Okay, next meeting is June 9th at 8:00, 8:00 a.m., what is that?